I will entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $123,034.80.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectman's October 2nd, 2023, open meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the general laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 921-23 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to exempt from Section 20 of Chapter 268A of the general laws, the contracts and amounts for the individuals listed below contained within the 1021-23 warrant pursuant to subsection D of said section.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As is the norm, every year we get a request to close off Pickering Street, Winthrop Street, and Maple Street to traffic on the evening of Halloween. So this year that falls on Tuesday, October 31st, between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. Chief Francis has said that they have the staff for the closure and that if the board would support it, they could do so. So, does the board have any questions? Okay, I will entertain-
I just have one question.
Sure.
Chief, earlier today we heard maybe that it was 4:00 to 8:00, or do you think it's 5:00 to 8:00?
It's 5:00 to 8:00, but we have our offices in involved.
Okay, so it's 5:00 to 8:00 is the closure. Alright, thank you.
I will entertain a motion to close Pickering Street, Winthrop Street, and Maple Street from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 31st, for celebration of Halloween.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to authorize the chairman's signature on a letter of support for the North Shore Alliance's redo application.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the resignation of Diane Pauley from the Essex Housing Authority Representative to the Affordable Housing Trust.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is 6:05, so I am going to invite John and Terry Tremblay and Andrew Gold to the microphone, or whoever wants to represent, to join us at the microphone. And, thank you so much for being here this evening. So, John and Terry Tremblay are the owners of BB Botanics down on John Wise Ave. And, welcome to this evening's meeting. So, for the board's sake, as you probably recall from the host community agreement, we have required that the Tremblays meet with us once a quarter to just let us know how business is going, how things are, you know, anything they want to announce to us, any hiccups they have, anything they want to present. So, they followed, both the Tremblays followed up with me in June. They had opened, they commenced operations at the weekend, actually, that we had Essex in Bloom, which was May 19th, 2021. And I followed up with them in June to talk about whether or not the board would like to have them in for our quarterly update. At that point, they had only been open for about four weeks and really hadn't seen any business. So there was nothing to truthfully report. We do know that just recently we received your report for expenses. You sent an email requesting expenses for police, fire, and border health. And we are pleased to announce that there have been zero expense to the town on any of the three safety department fronts. So that, it speaks volumes that we're not having any issues down there, so that's great. Thank you both so much. So at this point, the floor is yours. Give us a little bit of an update, tell us how business is going, and we'll take it from there.
So, we opened up. It's nice to be finally opened up in town. But business has been going pretty good. It's been, started off slow, building up, getting more and more customers. Haven't really had any issues. Everything's been going pretty smooth. Happy to be open and be a part of the community.
Great, thank you. So, one of the things I did want to mention is, as you know, somebody had mentioned to us that there was a name change from BB Botanics to Best Bud's. And I know that, for the board's sake again, I actually reached out to the Tremblays when that was brought to our attention. Brendan and I were notified. And initially, so when we went through the whole process, it was BB Botanics, which the intent was always Best Bud's Botanics. When they initially opened back in May, they saw no real foot traffic, no one was stopping. People, it wasn't identifiable, people didn't know what they did, so they kept passing by. Since they have actually done the name change to the intended name all along, there's been a huge spike in business. So that's been a really good-for-business situation.
Yeah, a lot of people in the beginning didn't notice who we were. Came in and said, "Oh, we didn't even know you guys were dispensary." So, since the new sign, that people come in like the sign, and got, yeah, we're getting a lot more foot traffic, people coming in.
So we did, there was a little bit of a, kind of a cart-before-the-horse situation where they were supposed to come before the board through our host community agreement and ask permission to change the name. They didn't do that. They're here tonight. It's been a positive thing for the business. It's been successful. It has increased business down there. And we did get our first-quarter payment, I think the whole board was notified, that the first-quarter DOR payment came in from BB Botanics, which was $4,000. So, it does speak to the fact that they are now actually making some money. So, are there any other questions? Any concerns, problems with the sign change or anything?
I'm just wondering if that type of business is that mainly what is it? Is it like foot traffic, people going by that see it, or is it?
It's kind of a mixed bag. I mean, we have a lot of repeat customers that are in the area that said that they, you know, they're happy we're there, we're happy that we're in the community now. But a lot of people, you know, drive by, we get a lot of seasonal people in the summertime. We've seen a lot of seasonal people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We still see a lot of people in the town for weddings and stuff. So we see a lot of one-time customers, but we see a lot of repeat customers that are from the area as well.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. So, we have had people stop into the office or call us. With respect to the name change, is that something you actually have to take steps to do at the state level? Or it was already in your paperwork?
We don't really see it as a name change.
It's fine, we just, so I can answer people, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the corporate entity that is on record with the Secretary of the Commonwealth's business records is in fact BB Botanics LLC. There is not a rationalization for a formal entity name change. And the regulatory process is only for that level of name change.
Okay, and then the other question that gets asked is that there are regulations that say that you can't make certain colloquial references to marijuana products, or marijuana, components of marijuana. I assume that what you've got there is something that's within that policy?
Yes, yes. There's no current regulatory compliance concerns with the way the sign and the name is presented.
Okay. So that answers those questions, right? So I'll tell everyone. And then another question I have, we realize that the CCC is in the process of, again, revising regulations. We realize that perhaps the community impact fee portion of the original regulations is going to go to the point where unless you can show a dollar put out by the town, the establishment doesn't have to give you anything back. We have heard that some dispensaries are, in a way, making gifts beyond the 3% sales tax. And you don't need to answer me now, but we've heard that in lieu of what the town was expecting, which was an impact fee, but the regs are changing, some dispensaries have said, "You know what, we're going to give you a little bit more over and above, but it wouldn't be as an impact fee, it would be as some kind of a gift to the community." I just wanted to put that out there, because the regs I don't think have even come to fruition yet.
No, they've been promulgated and approved by the Secretary of State, but they don't become law until November.
November, yeah.
I also think it's important to note that John actually called me last week to talk about wanting to make some donations and keep them local, and asked who he should reach out to. So I gave him, I mentioned Annie Cameron, and provided her phone number, and said that she would be the person to reach out to for Bobby Decker to work with the schools. I mentioned the Essex Fire Department does their annual fundraiser. And I mentioned reaching out to the Chief of Police. And I mentioned reaching out to the school nurse. Was that, was that the four I gave you?
Yeah.
So that would be a way for them to help the community, even if the requirement for an impact fee drops completely out, and it sounds like that's going to happen.
And they did ask about wanting to provide meals for those in need around Thanksgiving and what they could do at Christmas. So I did, that was the information that I gave. If you feel there's other things, we can certainly-
That's all I had.
Well, can I just ask that we do put together some type of a list? Because I do know that there's, you know, the gardens, the pocket things. I know that, you know, Conomo Point has a lot of landscaping. So if there are other types of things, I'd like to see a list that anybody that would like to do a donation has more than just, you know, the four.
I can work on a list and then the board can formalize that.
I think that would be helpful if there's a fund to put money into.
I did it off the cuff, just in a conversation.
Absolutely, that's why I'm just saying. I think it would be good.
Sure.
Sure, absolutely. So I think that, given that part of our host community agreement was that we get, have a discussion about the name change, I think that it's important to take a vote on that. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the change of name from BB Botanics to Best Bud's Botanics at 242 John Wise Ave.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's kind of like the trade name, right? Because isn't the corporate entity still BB Botanics?
Will still be BB Botanics, yeah.
So, Madam Chair, I think the vote should reflect that. That the corporate entity hasn't changed, it's just the way to which they're referring to themselves, on the street, really.
Okay, so-
They're still, yeah, they're still BB Botanics LLC.
Is their corporate name?
Yeah.
So you just want a signage change vote? So we're going to authorize the change of the sign?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We took that vote, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, one more question too. In host agreement was the quarterly meetings as well. So, do we need to, you know-
We'll take your guidance.
Schedule quarterly meetings, or should we just?
You can just be in touch with me and we'll get you in front of the board once in a while.
That need, need-
Yeah, because right now, we're not hearing of any, any issues, really.
Yeah, I think it's, a lot of things that happen in town, John, are typically complaint-driven, unfortunately. And if things are just going down the road easy does it, I'm not sure that we have to bring you in every quarter to do an in-person meeting, but please do an update with Brendan, throw it in your mind, or send him an email, he'll forward it to me.
The agreement sets that up as a framework, but it can be waived, you know.
Okay, I just wanted to know if that's something we should pursue, or?
Not unless, not unless you have something new to bring to the board, or we hear about a complaint, or we need more information.
Great, that sounds good.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks.
So it's, Maria's not here.
What time is it?
I have Maria at 6:15, at 6:15.
She's not here. I would keep going with other business.
Was Charles Benevento going to call in this evening, or will we just go, no, okay. So, the board received the employment contract for Mr. Benevento. Did everyone have a chance to review that, and do we have any questions for Brendan? I sent all of mine.
Oh, I was fine with that.
You were fine with it, okay. So I will entertain a motion to execute the employment agreement with Mr. Benevento as the incoming town accountant for an approximate start date of November 15th.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the discussion regarding the Conservation Commission's desire to be represented by separate legal counsel.
Yes, among other things, yes. Okay.
Doesn't have his name.
So, with respect to being represented by separate, I'll take that.
Oh, sorry.
Separate legal counsel. You know, we have, we have determined that unless a board or committee has a statutory authority, usually within the Massachusetts general laws, to retain counsel, whether that's pro bono counsel or paying for counsel, they're not allowed to actually retain counsel. And that's the case with the Conservation Commission, because you had questions from the Commission as to whether they could, in some way, retain their own counsel. The answer is no. With respect to the wetlands and stormwater bylaw, you had the superintendent here at one of your past meetings. And, you know, the question came up as to whether the Conservation Commission could take over the municipal separate storm sewer program, MS4, that's required by the EPA. DPW has since clarified, and they're indicating that, yes, to the extent that we're talking about clearing land at an acre or more, that should be folded into the Conservation Commission bylaw if and when such a bylaw is proposed. But with respect to managing MS4 generally, the DPW is very much in favor of keeping that. They have a budget for it, and they also, of course, know a lot more about managing the drains and such. So hopefully that clarifies things. I don't know if anyone has any questions on it, but I would say that if the Conservation Commission comes for a bylaw in the spring, it would just be that component of MS4 that's folded into it and nothing else.
We don't know if they're interested in just that or not, yet, do we?
We don't, we don't, because we haven't heard back from them on where they are with that.
Yeah.
With respect to searching for a conservation agent, realize that we did go back to, well, we went to Georgetown at first, and it seemed that that was, you know, is more than our budget. We went to Gloucester and they decided that they didn't have appropriate capacity. So, the only other offer, if you will, still on the table is that Georgetown offer. We currently have an agent budget of $8,630. And with benefits, if we were going to get something from Georgetown, it's about $14,000. So there's another fifty, you know, fifty-four hundred dollars involved there. And speaking with Cliff Agaloff of the Conservation Commission, he asked, you know, is that something that could still be explored? I would say that if you were going to do it, it would be obviously during budget season, when you're looking at all the other competing needs. And if you're going to look at that, I would say that the extra money obviously has to be put against how many hours we're going to get. And the number of hours, I think, in this proposal was only like five hours. And I'm wondering whether, if you're interested in pursuing maybe the $14,000 price tag, do you want to look at, okay, well, we'll do that, but we want more hours for it? And kind of, that's kind of where that stands. And again, I recommend right now that I just keep track of this and bring it back to the board when the budget season opens up officially.
And I'm sorry, that's five hours per week, five hours per month?
Per week.
But it's almost, what, how much, $5,000 more for the same five hours?
It's like $5,600 more.
Yeah.
Yes. But what you might get for that, though, is if the person is getting full benefits in Georgetown, and we're paying for a portion of those, they may want to stay in that position longer. And we will not have the problem of every year and a half, two years having, and what usually happens is, there's an abrupt departure of the agent. We have had no time to prepare, and then, so we're in a period like we are now, which is, you end up with no agent for a while until you can find one. This time, we decided to, before they went and hired just another Essex part-time agent, we decided to look at those shared services, but one is a no-go and the other one's more expensive.
Is there any way we can get sort of a longer-term commitment from Georgetown that if, if their person leaves, that when the new person comes in, they're automatically going to be part of the Essex? Because we're going to be paying benefits, and will have paid into that.
That would be, yeah, so we would, we would hope to have a memorandum of understanding
Yeah.
with Georgetown, if that's what works out with. And that memorandum of understanding would talk about the position, always having that in it, and that the town of Essex would be, if they want to change that, there would be an official notification. But yes, we would go for the stability, because you're paying extra, but you might be getting something
Right.
as far as the institutional history of the town
Yeah.
out of the deal, so.
Okay.
So, but it's important to note that the Conservation Commission's been without an agent for over four months now since Dave has left. All of the duties of building permits, site visits, orders of conditions, enforcement orders, have fallen on the shoulders of one of the co-chairs, who's a volunteer, working a full-time job, and he is the only person doing it. It's becoming burdensome, and he's reached out to me, and it's, it's an issue. So we're, you know, putting this on, it's, it's a struggle for him to continue to do this. We're going to end up without an agent. And I think, you know, again, I realize we have to do this in budget season, we have to look at the wage and salary scale, but the Wetlands Protection Act has allowed them to collect fees that's now in excess of $40,000. I don't know why we couldn't continue to keep our 8630 that we allot for it and have them chip in the remaining portions.
Could certainly look at that, and then, then you wouldn't have a budget problem, and you could perhaps move forward with Georgetown.
Is it legal to use that funds for that?
That's my understanding.
Yeah.
And that fund is very specific and can't be used for very many things, but it's our understanding that it can be used for that. And it continues to grow, and even at the difference, if we could get away with doing it for a longer term, I mean, it's seven years of being able to do that without having to cross the bridge of an increase, so.
How often do they dig into that otherwise? Never.
Never.
So, yeah, so it's not like it's competing with other needs.
Correct.
So if you want, I could reach out to Georgetown and say, okay, what, how many hours can you give us for that money? What would an MOU look like? And at least get you something for review, if that's what you're interested in.
I think we need to explore it.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll set that up.
Do you, the Essex Senior Center property line, is that a quick enough discussion? We have a meeting in six minutes.
Think you can table it, because the attorney for the abutter has not gotten back to us. I think you remember, we were out on a site visit, and she indicated that she would be getting back in touch with us, and she has not. So I have nothing new to report.
So we will table that, thank you. So next is the opening and closing of the, doing all the warrant votes. So this is a little bit lengthy, but we can do this before our next appointment.
I'm going to recommend you wait on that, because the chairman of the planning board is going to be at this meeting later.
Okay.
She's giving the warrant one more once-over, just to make sure, because a lot of the changes from town council got inserted today. And we want to make sure that her eyes have benefited from what you have in front of you before you sign it.
Okay, perfect.
There's one up top that we skipped over, the-
Because I think that's going to be a lengthy discussion.
The high school thing?
Yes. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the request from Shay's Riverside Restaurant and Bar to close for cleaning and repairs from October 15th, 2023, to approximately April 15th, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the next vote is going to be altered slightly. Shelley Bradbury has reached out to me, and she does not want to resign from the Affordable Housing Trust just yet. She actually would like me to table that portion of this vote. So I will entertain a motion to vote to accept the resignation from Shelley Bradbury to the Economic Development Committee effective immediately.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to ratify the board's vote on 10-2 to assign the parking and dumpster license formally granted to Inca Newburyport LLC to Sektor LLC, which is the license agreement we have with the Village Restaurant that will now be the James North Shore.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the rental of Centennial Grove Cottage for Ales Over ALS Nathan Woodman for use on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, between the hours of 1:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. He's also asked that we waive the fee, or waive receiving the fee prior to use of the cottage, that we receive it after they've collected all of the funds, which we do traditionally every year.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's not really waiving, it's postponing?
It's postponing, so, my apologies. Under the one-day wine and malt licenses, I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day wine and malt for Ales Over ALS Nathan Woodman for use on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, between the hours of 1:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. within the confines of the Cottage at Centennial Grove. And due to the number of people that he anticipates coming to this fundraiser, he is required to have two detailed police officers at the entire length of the event. So I just want to make sure that that gets part of the motion.
Okay, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the four one-day wine and malts for Anna Hardy, as listed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day entertainment license for Ales Over ALS Nathan Woodman for use on Saturday, November 4th, 2023, between the hours of 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. within the confines of Centennial Grove, which is a live amplified band.
So moved.
Why is this different from the other one? Oh, and-
Entertaining.
These are all the same, it's just rental of the Grove and alcohol and an entertainment.
Okay.
Do you want to second it, Ella?
Sorry, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a reminder that the next regular board's selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, November 13th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the teachers lounge of Essex Elementary School. The other reminder is that we do have the Chamber of Commerce Essex Division meeting this Wednesday at 8:00 a.m., which will be at Woodman's. Is Martin going to join us at the table?
Yeah, Martin is going to do the presentation from there.
So Martin, if you want to join us at the end of the table and get your presentation set up, we'll be, we'll introduce you in just two minutes.
Thank you. Brendan, I blew that timed out and went off.
Okay, we'll fix that.
So are we skipping the NASA Office of Business Development? Oh, okay.
So Pam, you may want to slide out of the way, because someone's going to try to get that on the camera.
Yeah, I will.
Or smile really big.
You can go home now. Pam, you can go home.
So at 6:30, we have Mr. Martin Pillsbury of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to present the town's update on its hazard mitigation plan and to take public input thereon.
Thank you very much to the board for taking the time to have this presentation tonight. Just to be clear, this is a presentation for information. The board is not being asked to take any action tonight. And for your edification and for the public who attends. So, give a little background about hazard mitigation, and thanks to, thanks to Brendan for sharing some slides with me earlier that I thought were very telling, comparing the nor'easter, nor'easter of 2018 with normal conditions right nearby at Farnham's. Hazard mitigation planning is an activity that is taking place and has been taking place across the whole country under a national framework that FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency administers. It all goes back to the Disaster Mitigation Act, a federal act of the year 2000. And with that act, FEMA has published guidelines for local hazard mitigation plans that are designed to provide a plan, in theory at least, for every city in town in the whole country. And so Essex has a plan that actually has been renewed once or twice prior to that, and we are tonight working towards renewing the new plan for the, for the town. The idea of these plans, everyone may be more familiar with disaster recovery, disaster response. These are what activities and planning a community can do before disaster happens, not after you're responding to it. Before disaster occurs, in order to increase your resilience and reduce your vulnerability to the damages that would occur in different kinds of natural hazards. These plans, as I mentioned, are on a five-year update cycle. Once you have a plan, it's supposed to be renewed every five years, which is what we're doing now. And one of the other notable pieces of this is, while it's not a mandate to have one of these plans, it's not a literal requirement, there's a very strong incentive in that FEMA has grant programs to allocate dollars for actual projects on the ground for mitigation, things like drainage, generators, things like that. But you have to have an approved plan in place in order to be eligible for those grants. So that's kind of the carrot, they use more of a carrot approach rather than a stick approach. Let's talk a little bit about what we mean by hazard mitigation, because it's probably not a term that rolls off the tongue for most people. The little definition you see on the upper-left side in the green here is one that MEMA, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, has used. To boil it down simply, activities to reduce the impacts of natural hazards through strategies that include policies, projects, and- and programs, and we'll get into some of those in this presentation. We ask these two questions you see in the lower left of this slide when we entertain this kind of a planning. What preventative actions are being taken now to reduce risks and damages of natural hazards in the community? And more importantly than, what additional actions can be taken in the future to increase your resilience? And so that's, at the core, that's the planning activity. This is a multi-hazard plan for all kinds of natural hazards, like everything you see listed there. Flooding by far, in a way, is the most ubiquitous and most common and significant hazard in most communities and in your coastal community like Essex, it's not only the inline flooding of rivers and streams, but it's the coastal damages of nor'easters as well. But all kinds of other events are covered in the plan, wind events like thunderstorms, hurricanes, tornadoes, winter hazards, blizzards, nor'easters, ice storms, geologic hazards even, earthquakes, wildfires, mostly in this case, we're talking about things like brush fire because we don't have like large forest fires here, but outdoor fires, and extreme temperatures and drought. So some of these hazards are very low probability for this part of the country, like major earthquakes, but every category that potentially could occur is at least listed in the plan and discussed, and those that have more, that are more common and actually occurring, there's more information about, there's more time spent on them. The whole idea of this program nationally is what FEMA likes to call breaking the cycle of disaster rebuilding, disaster rebuilding, which probably isn't as severe a case in Essex and some other communities, but we have some other communities in Massachusetts even, especially some along the coast where there have been a lot of repetitive losses at the same properties. You get funding to rebuild, you often rebuild in the same way, in the same place, and set yourself up for the next disaster. So mitigation planning is designed to interrupt this cycle, slow it down as much as possible. So when we talk about hazard mitigation, what do we really mean by that? It's not one thing, it's not one technique, it's actually a term, an umbrella term to use for a number of different kinds of activities and measures communities can take. And here's a representative list of some of the most common categories of mitigation actions. The first ones are prevention, preventative actions. The more you can do to prevent the damage from occurring to begin with, the better. I like to call this one of keeping out of harm's way through zoning and local regulations that decide where you decide where you locate development vis a vis where the hazard areas are, how it's developed, even if it isn't a known hazard area, how are buildings elevated in flood zones, for instance, things of that sort, things that you can do to actually reduce the risk. Property protection, that gets into, you know, hurricane protection on buildings, fortifying structures, elevating them in flat areas, that sort of thing. Where you already have development, historically, that's been put in areas that we now know to be hazard zones, maybe they weren't thought about that when, in an older community where development goes back to what, the 1600s practically, there's been patterns of development where we have a lot of things that are now in floodplains and other hazard areas, and so you want to find the best way to coexist with those hazards and to reduce their impact on the development. Public education, the third item on this list, is also actually very important because this is not just about what the town can do for town facilities, that's a very important part of this, but every property owner, small business owner, has property that might be in harm's way and things that they can do, be aware of what hazards they may be affected by and things that they can do, what resources are available to them for managing their own properties and managing their own risk. Protecting natural resources, you know, things like wetlands and floodplains, letting Mother Nature do some of the work for us by acting as buffers to storm damage, so all the good things that we know, written right into the Wetlands Act, it's like what purposes of that, buffering from storms. Keeping those in place and protecting them is actually a kind of hazard mitigation. And then the one that often draws a lot of the attention, structural projects, infrastructure projects, drainage projects, culverts, and other kinds of ways of maintaining the drainage systems. Do we need to change something?
I just need to mute.
Slider's on the side.
Ah, okay. Okay, you got it, thank you. So structural projects could be culverts, pumps, dams, and that sort of thing, and these are the projects, if you have a need for a project like this in town, these are some of the projects that could potentially be funded by the FEMA grants I mentioned earlier that are available once you have a plan approved. And finally, emergency services protection. The theory here is we want to, you know, one of the highest priorities is to protect the actual facilities that your emergency first responders rely on for them to do their job. So if there's a hazard, the last thing you want is for the actual public safety facility to go out or, you know, things of that sort, like, because then they can't properly provide protection for everyone else in the community. So making sure that those facilities perhaps are even more protected, hardened, et cetera, when it comes to that. So those are a few of the ideas of what we mean by hazard mitigation. We'll see that there's a number of these in the community already and this plan will develop some recommendations for how some of these can be strengthened. The plan that we're doing now and the ones that have been done in recent years, not only looks at hazard mitigation by looking backward at what's the record of how many floods have there been, how many events have occurred in the past, but also looking forward now that we have information about future projections for changes and sea level rise changes and temperatures and climate change, and thinking what the implications of those future trends could be on some of these very same hazards. So it's not a different hazard, it's just that floods and rainstorms could just be more severe in the future. We've already seemed to see that trend happening, and so the plan will bring in this kind of information to help you think that through and be aware of that. In other words, when we say we're going to protect for a certain storm, that actually is perhaps a moving target in the future and that's something that we need to take into account. So dealing with, looking at the climate resilience piece here has now become in recent years part of the whole approach to climate, to hazard mitigation. So let's look a little bit about the planning process, and again, thanks to Brendan for sharing some great photos that show in real life what's going on in the community. So we have a little chart here that kind of lays out the steps that we're in the process of developing a plan. And in fact, you can see from where the green star is that we're kind of in the midway process here. We've been gathering some information, we've had, first of all, there's a local team and they have met a couple of times, we'll talk a little bit about more of them, they've helped us develop some of the information you see on the left chart, the earlier steps, assessment of the risks, and the team helped us with mapping critical facilities and that sort of thing. We're sort of at a midway point where we've gathered some information, we have more to gather, and at this point, we wanted to, you know, open it up and make the broader community aware of the plan. If folks, you know, are concerned about some of these hazards in their own neighborhoods and their own areas, that's the kind of thing we want to hear about to bring that information into the plan, so just to make folks aware of what we're doing. And, you know, there's a few more steps ahead of us aiming towards finishing this up next spring. So that's kind of a roadmap to the major steps in the process. The local team that I mentioned, the local hazard mitigation team that has been pulled together, has representatives from several of the key town departments, the town administrator, fire department, police, public works, and we also have some participants from beyond town hall in the Essex County Greenbelt and Cape Anne Chamber of Commerce, and thanks to them for spending some time with us in our meetings, it really helps to get more broad input and wider perspectives on these issues from other partners in the community. The role of this local team, first of all, we've laid out a series of four meetings, two of which have occurred, I'd say we're in the midpoint now, and what we'll do in those meetings is to basically ask them to provide local knowledge, the kind of thing we can't go look up, you know, about local storm events and how they've damaged, at a level of local detail that we wouldn't find just looking into state reports, federal reports, and those kind of reports are useful to set a broader context and we do use them, but the team gives us invaluable information that's not really published anywhere. And so we gather this together and actually by putting it into this plan, it becomes published information, a very useful reference point, I think. And then the team will help us to, finally, when we get to the endpoint of coming up with mitigation actions, it will be recommendations for future actions, to sort of thinking about that strategy, you know, endorsing which ones would be best for the town and finalizing those. So that's the role the team will play, it's really critical, it's really the backbone of putting the plan together. So in the couple of meetings that we've held already, what have we already, kind of information have we already gathered and what have we learned? So we've, I've mentioned some of the data we've collected. When we collect information, one of the things we start with is what are the critical facilities and critical infrastructure in the town? So we collect an inventory of that and each of the fire, the police, public works, everybody in town knows different aspects of this, so we gather it all into one unified database, and every site that's in the inventory is also mapped. Now, I know you can't see it very well here, but if you see little sort of green dots and speckles on the map, each one of those is a critical infrastructure piece that's in the inventory and it's numbered so you can refer to it between the inventory and the map, see where it's located. So these are just a few representative examples, there are, I think, over 80 or 90 of these sites listed in the plan itself, but obvious ones, you know, from municipal facilities, the town hall, public safety, DPW transfer station, but we also look beyond municipal at broader infrastructure, like various water or sewer pump stations, town wells and water filtration, and then a number of bridges that are critical. And then we look beyond the town's own infrastructure into the broader community, community facilities, for instance, the elementary school, traffic terrace, senior center, magical beginning sort of, wherever you might have childcare. And one of the reasons for that is we're looking at facilities that, the ones on the top of the list are facilities that we say provide utility to the town, provide the ability to respond. The ones on the lower end of the list are often facilities that may require assistance because you have populations, whether it's children or seniors or whatever population it may in a disaster. So to be aware of both where you're providing resources for response and also where there are needs for response to be had. So this is a sort of representative sample of some of the sites that were already pulled together by the local team. The other thing that the team, it's the same map, just we have some different themes to talk about here, is where are the local hazard areas? Where are the hotspots for various kinds of local hazards? And again, flooding occurs as a much more common hazard than other types, and this is some of the key ones, but there's actually a longer list in the plan of some of the main areas where flooding does occur. On the map, these are the areas that show the little blue areas, like blue polygon circles and funny shapes, these are the identified flooding areas. And then we also look at some other hazards like brush fire and fire hazards where, for instance, the fire chief has pointed out the areas that might be more vulnerable to those kind of fires given the vegetation type. You know, in a normal year, they're probably not highly vulnerable, but you have to think about drought years where some of these areas then become more vulnerable. So we also identified some winter hazards, some areas where there's snow hazards, ice hazards on the roads and that sort of thing. So the multiple hazard approach here, a number of different kinds of hazards being located. The plan broadly talks, like I mentioned earlier, about a range of other hazards beyond flooding, and some of them are not common and some of them are a little more common in Essex, so there will be information in the plan about all of these other kinds of hazards, extreme heat, earthquakes, drought, and extreme precipitation, et cetera. And finally, especially being a coastal community, the wind and winter hazards, nor'easters, just a few records here of recent years of high wind and nor'easter type events, so we've obviously been repeatedly pounded by these kind of events in recent years and unfortunately that probably will continue, so the more we can do to be prepared for it, the better. So shifting gears, that characterizes the hazards and where we have hazard areas, then the next question is, well, what can you do about this? How can we mitigate these hazards, that's what this plan is all about? So we begin that process by assessing what you have in place already. We want to, and you have a lot in place already, this list actually is all existing mitigation measures that are already in place, and we do that so that we can get an idea of what the baseline is, which you have already, and that helps to identify where are there gaps, where are there measures that are here but could be strengthened? Maybe there's a bylaw, but it's an old one and it could be updated. Maybe there's a drainage project that needs to be, you know, brought forward and improved to solve a flooding issue in a specific area. So we start by doing this assessment of what your existing mitigation measures are, and those are broken down by the category or type of hazard. You can see the measures that are here, flood mitigation, like the ongoing study of Apple Street, participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, which is critical for property owners in the town, your storm water management MS4 permit, some of the things I heard mentioned earlier tonight, these are already in place, they may be changing in the future, but they're already in place and so you have a good baseline to start with. Fire hazard mitigation, like things such as, because we're talking about outdoor fire, things like outdoor burning permits, et cetera. So there's a number of, you know, the good news is there is a base to start with. The town has been living with these kind of hazards for a long time, long before we did a FEMA plan, so you want to start by understanding what you have in place already. And then the next steps that we'll think about, then knowing what you have in place already, excuse me, is to develop the recommendations for what the plan should say, here's the way you can improve your mitigation in the town, and it's a five-year plan, so it's going to sort of lay out things according to ideas that you could do over the next five years. Some of the measures we'll be talking about may be actually more than five years to actually implement, but you would maybe get started on some of them. So there will be two more meetings of the local team. The first one we'll have next month in November that will assess the status of the recommendations from your previous plan five years ago, what was implemented, what was not, what still needs to be implemented. Then the final meeting in January, that's when the mitigation, recommended mitigation strategy will be developed and endorsed by the team. Once we have the information out of those last two team meetings, we'll have all the information we need to develop the full draft plan, and that's when we'll come back for a second public meeting and have a draft plan in hand, one could be put up on the website, the public can see it, the actual text of the plan. So that would be the schedule we've laid out, that should happen in February. Finalizing that plan after that's been reviewed by the board or by the public, submitting that plan, then that's a draft plan still because it has to go to MEMA and to FEMA for their review comments, and then when they finally approve the plan's content, the last step in the process, it would come back to this board for them for a vote of adoption after it's been approved by FEMA. FEMA likes to know that you go through all this process and they do a formal review, and then the final plan actually has the leadership of the community's endorsement on it, it's not something, a good plan that gets shoved away somewhere and isn't known about. So they want to make sure it has that visibility and that buy-in at the top level of local decision-making. So those are the remaining steps between now and next spring. And as I mentioned again, after FEMA approval of the plan, the town will be eligible for FEMA grants. Now, there's one last thing I want to mention tonight and as process of gathering public input into this process, besides those who might be watching this tonight and could send us some comments, we have a, we're going to be launching an online survey, and this will be, it's designed to be fairly easy to take and simple, there's about seven or eight questions, it would take 10 minutes or less to fill it out, and so we have a link here to the survey, I guess we'll be putting this up on the website and emailing it around to some of our contacts, but anyone who would like to take the survey, we would definitely encourage you because we'll hope to get some different perspectives on these hazards and what people's concerns and what people's priorities are. So that will be the last step in the process, we'll take the results of that survey, we'll run that until December 15th, just before the holidays, and we'll take the results when we get them all back and we'll fold those into the plan itself, and that will help inform the plan itself. Because it's a limited number of people that can actually attend a meeting like this, so we want to have a tool that can help us reach a broader population in the town. And with that, does the board have time to allow for questions or comments from yourselves or others?
No, I don't want you to have to stay two hours.
Sounds like Tina.
No, no, I know.
Is there, let me start with the board, does the board have any questions? Peter, I know you've been part of these meetings in person, so.
Yeah, I'm on the team, so, yeah.
You have no questions?
Okay, so I do have a couple of questions. So as far as what has Essex been financially burdened by some of these? I mean, I know we have storms, I know most of us kind of like when we have a storm. I know that when we've had a week-long of an outage, the town had electricity at different places so that people were not without electricity, so I'm trying to understand what are some of the issues we have hit? Financially, did some, you know, was there large amounts of money going out? I'm just trying to understand the process of why, and then what is the gain? At the end, what's, you know, anytime we do something like this, it feels like there's a dollar at the end of the, at the end of the trip?
Well, that's certainly one of the reasons. In order to qualify for certain federal grants, you have to have an up-to-date federal hazard mitigation plan in place. We have, this I believe is the third iteration of the plan.
That's right.
So every five years, Elva, and for instance, the Apple Street funding that's being discussed, that would not be possible unless we keep this plan current. So even though we've applied for that funding, if the plan goes stale in the time between then and when you're, even I think after you have the project, you have a problem with the funding. With respect to really the practical aspect of the plan, it's just to really keep all the departments focused on what the major hazards are so that we can try to avoid. With respect to money lost in the past, I can tell you that during that 2018 storm, we did lose a truck because we couldn't get the person who had the key over to the place where the truck was quickly enough because of flooding, that flooded both the Causeway and Apple Street. We cannot point to very. We cannot point to very many high-cost municipal losses, although in that, in the same 2018 stretch, there was a lot of damage to the Canoma Point seawall system. And we did have to spend money, which we got back from FEMA. And again, you have to have a plan in place to get it, to do patchwork. And then eventually, we got the whole seawall replaced. And that was state money. But all of the things that you have to write in a grant application, including, you know, what plans are in place, that helped us get that money. And that was 1.7 million to do the permanent replacement of the seawall. I can say that there have been plenty of private losses during storm events, just not so many high-profile public losses.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other question I have is, are we involving our school systems? Because this seems like a really good thing that, you know, kids in high school would be able to contribute since this is going to be their area soon.
So I don't think that's a standard element of the program, but it doesn't mean we couldn't. Martin, have you seen that done in other places?
In some cases, the local team that we have here has someone from the school system on it. Because that's, as you know, kind of a different part with, it's part of the town, but a different part, right? So it's possible to invite them maybe to some of the future meetings. The other thing is this survey could go out to, whether it's to staff and faculty or even maybe some of the students that have older ones anyway.
All right, I'll make those contacts.
Yeah, I think, I mean, both school systems, both the high school and also with the Essex Tech, I think there's actually groups that are, you know.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, since the Board of Selectmen has asked their questions, I'm going to go online. If there's anybody joining us this evening online with questions for Mr. Pillsbury about the hazard mitigation plan, please unmute your line. Let us know your first and last name and your address, and then he can take your questions. Okay, it doesn't seem as though anybody online has questions or comments, so I'm going to go to the room. If there's anybody in the room that has questions, comments, concerns, I'm going to ask you to join us at the podium and speak into the microphone. And you do need to speak about six or eight inches away from the microphone so that it can be picked up on camera, please.
Steve Woodman, 121 Main Street. Question, in terms of some of the funding that FEMA, the projects FEMA has funded, are there major projects? I'm mainly concerned with flooding. That's what impacts, you know, my business and where I live and so forth. Projects that would go beyond this, you know, just Essex. And where I'm coming from this is, I know back in 1978, we had the blizzard of 78. That was basically a three-day storm where the wind was pounding us and pushing the water into the Essex River and we got flooded. But back then, it took three days of that wind constantly blowing in at hurricane forces or close to it to get a one tide that we really got a lot of, you know, the really highest water. We've had other flooding since then, and you mentioned the 2018 storms. We had two storms that came up to that same type of flooding. In fact, it might have been a little bit more, you know, just looking at the water we got at the restaurant. My concern is, why did it take three days for the water to get up to the Essex River to get that stage? And now it only takes one high course tide with the wind blowing at the same types of speed to get that in? And my thought has always been, if you look at 1978, the way the Cranes Beach and the Essex mouth of the river was, and you look at it now, I don't know, it was four or five times wider. So we've got four or five times more water coming into the river. Is there anything can be done to build up like Cranes Beach or something outside, like you have Rockport, where you have, I know you can't build a dam, but they have breakwaters out in the bay that actually would help, you know, the waves and the storm surge from coming in and battering, you know, coastal areas. So is this type, would this be a type of plan that could look at something like that and be developed?
That's a very interesting question because some of these impacts really are regional in their nature. This plan wouldn't be looking in detail at like a particular plan, but if there were an idea for a plan, for like an approach to manage that issue that entailed neighboring towns to, the scale, the nature of the proposal was, it's something that could be brought up to the team and thought about. What you have in this plan are basically ideas for mitigation that if you actually want to pursue them, you're going to have to apply for this big federal grant and do a lot more engineering detail and cost detail and impact about whatever that project is. At this scale, at the general plan here, we're looking at an overview and kind of putting together a high-level list of mitigation actions. So to my knowledge, a measure that, such as you're describing, a multi-town measure hasn't been on the list for either this town or the neighboring towns around because we've done Gloucester's Plan, we've done Ipswich's Plan. If there, I mean, if a proposal were put forward that seemed like it had some effectiveness to it, but required multiple communities, we certainly could help coordinate with multiple communities. But that's, it's a little bit of a theoretical question because I don't know what the actual project would be at this point.
Yeah, Martin, it sounds like that, or it seems like that may be something that MAPC could oversee or at least spearhead if that's the type of mitigation, if you want to do multi-community mitigation, because you cover the larger region, the state isn't probably going to get to that level. So, you know, maybe that's something that could be looked into, at least the Ipswich-Essays connection. I mean, you can't go any further than that.
I mean, I can think of a few examples, lesser-scale types of things where there were two towns involved. And that's in a few cases where there's a dam, like on the Charles River, for instance, that is actually right on the border between two towns. And each town is looking at that dam and going, no, that's their town. That's their, no, that's their dam. And it's like, because now it's more, you know, more of a liability in terms of cost. But so then there are ideas about, okay, how can we at least coordinate on managing this common resource? But in that case, you're talking about an existing piece of infrastructure that's already there, has challenges, it needs to be maintained or maybe taken out. But something has to happen to it, which will cost money. So you, it is a mechanism of working between the two towns' local hazard mitigation plans and having a cross-reference in each of their local plans to this measure that actually would implicate their neighbor. In this case here, there's not any, that I know of, any specific project proposal that would have that nature, that multi-town nature to it. But if there were, we certainly would be glad to help coordinate that with whatever neighboring towns were needed.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, Ipswich is not going to see as much impact as Essex, so it's probably not going to make it high on their list where it would be on ours. But yeah, something maybe to look at or discuss with Ipswich.
I mean, it could be, the scale of this plan, it could be at least put into the plan as like assess, something like assess the feasibility of regional actions. And then more details would have to be followed. But if you got a placeholder in the plan that at least brings that idea up, that's kind of where you, how you get started.
And I actually love that idea. Think about the cost-benefit long-term of something like that where we're so impacted by the need to dredge and the millions of dollars and the increase over time. If you did something like that and had a breakwater that would prevent all of the sand from coming into the channel, we probably would save money long-term, even though we would spend it upfront on that idea.
All I will say to this, not to throw a wet blanket on it, but like, think of the environmental permitting requirements, anything like this.
Oh, absolutely.
So it, there may be theoretically engineering solutions that you could do, but because you're dealing with, you know, protected resources, it might be difficult. But if you could, another big but, if you could think of an approach that used living shoreline type of approaches, green infrastructure, then maybe that might be easier to permit.
Sure.
So that's something to keep in mind.
And like you said, it's a placeholder for discussion.
So I appreciate bringing that up because I don't think that idea has come to the team before.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Is there anybody else with questions, comments, concerns? I'm going to go back to online. If there's anybody that wanted to speak, this is a last opportunity to unmute yourself, identify yourself and ask your question. Okay, hearing no one online, I am going to close that portion of this evening's meeting. And thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate you having me here.
Great presentation. So it's 7:02. I'm going to start the quarterly department head meeting. I'm going to invite Chief Raimi Reader to the podium to give us a fire department report, please.
You're getting ready for Halloween, I see.
Raimi Reader, Essex Fire Chief. Grant information. We received a new Scott Air Pak grant that we were awarded for $207,000. We've received the packs, we've been training with these, and they are now installed in all the trucks. The department has applied for a grant to replace our 1992 tanker truck. Also, at this time, we are trying to replace our 1997 ladder truck. We've been meeting with different vendors and trying to get prices to evaluate the right fit for the town of Essex. This is ongoing. Upcoming training, we are sending two firefighters to the firefighter one-two academy that has started this fall. This is a big commitment that takes a lot of time and hard work. I am proud of these two firefighters, Aaron Kershner and Patrick Rose, for taking this on. It's a big commitment. Also, training, we're able to get two buildings in town, which allowed us to do valuable training such as venting, ladder training, hose advancement, rescue training and much more. Upcoming trainings, chimney fires, driver training and rescue airbags. That's all we got.
Any questions for Chief Reader?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief Francis.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
So today Brennan and I, along with Rockport Chief John Horvath and Rockport's Town Administrator Mitch Vera, Manchester Chief Todd Fitzgerald and Manchester's Town Administrator Greg Fetischfield, met with representatives from Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council, which is NEMLEC. You may have heard of it. Executive Director James DG, DG and Vittorio, we call him DG because it's a lot easier, had requested that we all meet with him to talk about having us join NEMLEC. Also in attendance with the chief were NEMLEC members Chief Scott Nix of Sudbury and Chief Richard Howe of Tingsborough. The chief explained to us that the services provided to members of NEMLEC, which currently consists of 64 cities and towns in Middlesex and Essex County, the majority of Essex County are members of NEMLEC. Also discussed was the cost and requirements of member departments. Some of the services provided are as follows. Regional response teams that include SWAT units, K-9 teams, crisis negotiators, mountain bike officers, ATV operators, et cetera. Threat assessment and response teams to facilitate school safety efforts and develop plans as well as responding to threats and critical incidents. Incident management teams to include personnel certified in National Incident Management System, we call it NIMS, and Incident Command System, ICS. Critical incident stress management teams, which provide peer support and peer counseling for officers after a traumatic event or a loss of life. In the coming weeks, I will further research the benefits of NEMLEC, of the NEMLEC program, taking into consideration budgetary issues and services offered for further conversation with the Board of Selectmen. On Saturday, October 28th, we will be participating in the Drug Takeback Program. Those of you, I'm sure you all know at this point that we do have the Drug Takeback receptacle depository in the Vestabule upstairs in the fire department, in the, just before the fire department lobby. But we also have to participate in the Drug Takeback Program. So on this Saturday, we have Officer Watson will be upstairs in the lobby with a table and chair set up, and she will be taking anybody's old prescriptions and anything like that. We don't accept needles. She'll be taking that stuff and at the end of it, at 1:00 PM, she'll take that and turn it into the DEA at a designated site. And again, as a reminder, we do have the Drug Takeback Depository upstairs for anybody that has some unwanted or used or old drugs, prescription drugs that need to be dropped off. And that's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. As always, this time of year is very busy for our offices as they have started the annual in-service training as required by the MPTC. The firearms training portion of the in-service is scheduled for the second week of November, with the classroom portion scheduled for November 6th and the range portion scheduled for November 9th. Excuse me. Sergeant Bruce, who's the liaison to our school here, and I have been meeting with school administrators on a frequent basis, working in collaboration with their staff members and town officials on school safety issues and best practices in training, as well as vetting through school security measures. On Monday, November 20th and Tuesday, the 21st, we also are sending one of our offices to ALICE training, which is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter-Evacuate Training. On Thursday, October 5th, Sergeant Bruce and I, along with Manchester officers, including the School Resource Officer Andrea Locke, attended a school safety seminar at Endicott College, put on by the Northeast Homeland Security Regional Advisory Council, known as NERAC. Speakers at the seminar ranged from a Virginia Tech school shooting survivor to the Chief of Police in Command at the time of the Parkland, Florida, high school shooting, as well as representatives from NEMLEC and the TSA to discuss threat assessment, excuse me. On Friday, October 6th, Sergeant Bruce and Officer Watson and myself participated in hostile intruder tabletop exercises at the Essex Elementary School with staff members only as the students were not in school that day. Staff was then given the opportunity to ask questions of us and voice concerns. After the exercise, we split into two groups and walked into, walked to the two off-campus reunification sites. We would then have a soft lockdown drill on Wednesday, October 11th, in which the staff and students went into lockdown. We walked the school with Principal McAdams, checking doors to make sure that they were locked, making sure the shades were down in front of the doors, making sure that people weren't making noise. And for those who were wondering if it was alarming the kids, I believe they, the principal had told them that there was, we were treating it like there was an animal in the building and we wanted them to lock it down. On Tuesday, October 10th, Sergeant Bruce, DPW Superintendent Mike Galley, School Facilities Manager Jason Walden and I met on the west, on west, excuse me, on Western Ave and established the proper school zone in relation to the installation of two solar-powered flashing speed limit signs for the school zone. And Principal McAdams got that on a Safe Streets grant. Detective Edwards and detectives from Manchester Police Department participated in a school outreach event on October 13th. The purpose of the outreach event, at the request of a staff member, was to talk to students about police work and more specifically speak to what a detective, being a detective entails. And then just one more, regarding our cruisers, we are experiencing some issues with the two newest cruisers we have. At times, we're having difficulty with them starting. It doesn't appear to be a charger issue, a charging issue. It may be some sort of a computer issue, so we're working on getting that diagnosed. They're still running, but it can be worrisome. And that's it.
Thank you, Chief Francis. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Superintendent Galley?
I'll start with the transfer station. So at this point to date, we've sold 975 stickers, which is still below the 1,100 that we usually average, but it's still higher than the February gap that we filled previously at the beginning of the year. The trash tonnage, so from January to June, the average monthly tonnage was 91 tons. Since July, the average tons have been 48.5 tons a month. So the trash tonnage is definitely being reduced, but in the same token, the recycling tonnage has gone up. So obviously, the recycling is cheaper. So we're hoping in the future that we can kind of fix the pricing on the bags and maybe get that down lower. We're doing less hauls and we're also producing less trash. So that's the ultimate goal. At the moment, if you're at the transfer station, you'll see that we've removed the recycling containers and repositioning them. We're working on trying to get the pads poured for the recycling compactors. The goal with that also, same thing, is we should be able to haul more tons per haul and limit the amount of hauling. So that should also be a cost savings with that. On the water side, the water plant upgrades actually started today. We had the contractors show up today and they're starting to get situated. And at the moment, they're starting with the eye wash units in the treatment plant. With the highway department, the rain doesn't stop this year, so really, all we've been trying to do is accomplish getting through week to week with all the mowing. We'll be moving into fall cleanups and on rainy days, prep- We'll be moving into fall cleanups and on rainy days, prepping for winter, which is getting Sanders on. We're starting that this week, making sure that the plows are ready. And this is really the first year the Board of Commissioners voted to raise some of the snowplow rates to keep the contractors interesting, interested in plowing, and it's the first year that I haven't had to chase contractors around, hoping that we still have people on board. As you can see outside with the Route 22 paving project, that is not a town project, that's a state project, but with that being said, the state came in and basically paved from the Hamilton Line to Sheppan Memorial Park. I did meet with the contractor in the last week and worked out some of the details. There were some problems with parking lots and driveway transitions and road transitions, so that's being addressed. They actually came in today and started working. They should be done by the end of the week. Sewer department is ongoing with installing grinder pumps. We have 149 grinder pumps installed out of 203. And last but not least, the cemetery department. So with the cemetery, the new cemetery mapping software is being worked on and we're hoping to get that up and running in 2024. And basically, what it's going to do is that will take some of the old ways that we do things, which is untie cards and index cards and old mapping system and get us up to date on a computerized system. That's it. If you have any questions.
So my only question is about the E1s, which I know the name has changed, but since you started installing them a year ago or a year and a half ago, how, how are they working out? Are you having problems? Are you seeing any maintenance or are they as amazing as the rep stated when we came to that initial meeting?
There have been some problems. A lot of the problems, though, the pumps were under warranty and some of them are coming out of warranty now and basically, the savings is you can actually rebuild those units. The other ones that we had, the Myers system, that was a throwaway. So once it was installed, used, if there was a problem with it, it was really a disposable item, so that's where a lot of the cost came in. These units are able to be rebuilt and they come back to us.
The initial stall of the duplex unit at the Marlin, I know that was your problem site. How's that one fare?
Yeah, so we don't, actually, the overtime's been cut way down with the sewer department based on clogs and some of the things that we were having as a regular problem and we've cut that way back.
Excellent.
So that's not the problem.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions?
I just have one question, Mike. In regards to the water plant upgrade that's happening, is that going to cause any discoloration in the water or is it just internal?
No, so we're working with the contractor and as time goes on, we are going to have to either change our operating hours and we're going to try to work in conjunction where we have to still function. So we'll need our regular chemical pumps working while they're installing new units and then we'll have to do a swap over at the time, but the company that was hired, they do it for a living and so we have an engineer on site. And so with us working with them, we should be able to work out those problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
School Committee Chair Teresa Whitman.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to first thank Chief Francis and Officer Bruce for all the work that you've been doing with Essex Elementary in particular, but of course, throughout the district, it's meaningful and very much appreciated. The school year is underway. Just for your information, our new administrative hires are up and running. Our new high school principal, Julie Skroy, new high school dean of students, Elizabeth Drinkwater, we also have the new Director of Curriculum Instruction, Heather Leonard, and we still have our interim principal at EES, Principal Sheila McAdams. And fortunately, our middle school team is stable at the moment, but all those new hires are up and running and it's a very positive start to the school year. Tonight, I'll just report mostly on what our school committee is undertaking and has been up to at this point. As you know, we are in discussion and continuing the responsibility to look through budget solutions and work together collaboratively with our town partners. We had our first all-boards meeting, as you well know, and then we, at our next school committee meeting from there, decided to compile a list of all of the suggestions that were brought forth at the all-boards meeting and also, at the same time, include all of the suggestions that have come forth from community members through the last budget process to really evaluate each one of them and answer to each one of them. Many of them come repeatedly. Some of them are things that we've already been in process to consider, like class sizes and enrollment trends, things like the administrative structure. We were already in process of reviewing and comparing to other districts. Some of them are bigger conversations, like school choice as a revenue source and how we want to handle that. We just need to adjust our schedule of when we discuss that rather than the spring, bring it forward a little bit. But we are in process with that and there's about 20 suggestions on that list for us to go through. So we're currently prioritizing whether it's, each one is something we want to evaluate now that can be useful for the fiscal year '25 budget, or evaluate now but for a slightly longer-term solution, not for fiscal '25 necessarily, but the next two to three years. Evaluate at another time, something that might have value, but given the limited resources of time, we've got to prioritize the most bang for the buck. Or things that we really don't need to evaluate because they're either not viable as solutions or outside our scope, or something someone else handles already and we just need to compile the information so that people, as they come to gain interest in what we're all discussing together at different times throughout the year, we'd like to have a place where they can access all of this information so we're not answering the same questions over and over, reinventing the wheel, so they can actually start from a place of understanding. Our committee has learned that Town of Essex and Manchester town leaders would like to expedite. One of these ideas, the idea of a third-party review or operational audit, so that's a conversation that we're having and that we're all working through together. It'll be reflected in the collaboration meeting summary from October 20th. And then at the same time, our committee is working through a parallel process of determining what direction we will give the administration, Pam and Avi, to start their next budget for fiscal year '25, whether, whether it, in consideration of all of the factors we have to consider, not only the budget, though that is a key driver, but also the rest of the strategic priorities and ultimately, student achievement. School committee recently completed our superintendent evaluation. It's done every two years. We have completed it. You can access that on the website with minutes. It is now officially in the record and we're currently working together to set our goals for the year. Members have been able to do walkthroughs of three of our schools so far, the middle, the Memorial Elementary School, the middle school and the high school. We have EES tomorrow. The purpose of these walkthroughs is, first of all, to put a face to us for the teachers so that they know that we, we know that they're real people and we're considering their outcomes and the impact on them and of course, the students as well. But we really want to understand in terms of programming, how the strategic objectives that we set as policy are playing out in the classroom and what impacts they're having. Now that we're far enough into our strategic plan to see some progress, we're seeing real progress in authentic learning. We're seeing real progress in social-emotional learning incorporation into the classroom and it's really exciting to see. But we're also seeing, looking to understand how the conversations that we have regarding budget constraints and also, not just, not just how they impact budget, but best practices and appropriately sizing for our enrollment play out in the class size as well, particularly on the topic of class sizes right now. So we're seeing how at Memorial and at Essex Elementary, the class size change, the class sizes are different and how that impacts teaching and learning there versus at the high school where we have a different kind of conversation about class sizes and what the outcomes are there. So it's a good exercise for us to understand, to have a more robust understanding. On a related note, we've modified our policy subcommittee to be Program and Policy Subcommittee with an eye toward understanding how the educational program is impacted by the policies that we set and ensuring that we have full understanding when we take our votes. It's a three-person subcommittee right now and it's been a very positive improvement so far. Our negotiation subcommittee is moving forward with MITA to create our first paraprofessional contract. We're one of the few districts who does not have one currently. This is very positive progress and a little bit overdue, but now that our teacher contract is secure, completed last year, we're ready to move forward with that and so our subcommittee representatives are doing so. Regarding facilities, the turf field project is complete and came in under budget, which you've probably heard if you were listening to the school committee meeting, but we had about 16% built in for contingencies and only had to use $2,200 or $2,300 of that, so we are coming in well below budget, which is wonderful. Avi will have those final numbers to both towns ASAP for our fall town meeting votes about funding those capital projects directly. The outcome of those votes will make a big impact on our budget conversation moving forward. If we, if we have that flexibility to replenish the school choice fund that we've used to pay, to outlay the money for those projects, then we have a lot more flexibility in meeting town requests and being collaborative partners for the fiscal year '25 budget. Facility Subcommittee was also able to participate in our recent meeting and tour of EES, and this is exciting stuff here, with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. Our SOI, our Statement of Intent, was accepted this spring. We all know that Essex Elementary is on borrowed time for a number of large-scale projects to keep it going and at some point, we're going to start throwing good money after bad and it is time to move forward with that. So the Statement of Interest was accepted in the spring and now we are awaiting determination to see if we will be invited to the next step of this. The, the meeting started with gathering together with a number of MSBA representatives in the conference room where they reviewed questions that they had with us from the Statement of Intent. Some of the questions were things that would be of interest to, to the board here certainly, things about enrollment trends and drivers in terms of affordable housing and that sort of thing. So we're now, of the 63 statements that were put forth this spring, there are 32 that are being considered closely, so we are one of 32 right now. Last year, they approved 10. The year before, there were 17. I could have those reversed, but one, one year was 10, one was 17. And the bottom line is that the decision to move forward and to invite into the next step of this process will be based on need and rough dollar value of the project. So they have a certain amount of money and they have to consider all of the projects before them and they have to match up what the most need with the dollar amount available. They'll be meeting in December to start making those decisions and we should know either the end of December or sometime in January about that. Also, another very big piece of information for us moving forward with our budget conversations. I brought some paperwork for the next steps, if you guys would like it, since, just to make sure that you have that. I will say, Principal McAdams did a really excellent job of representing the need here, highlighting not only the disparity in facilities between our two towns in the same district, but between groups of students within our student body that have to attend at EES for different reasons, because we host some of the programs at EES, also highlighting that accessibility is a major concern. So she did a very good job representing on behalf of the students. On that topic, I will end with a, with a little report out of a school council meeting that I attended at EES. These are also public meetings. You're welcome to attend them anytime. There was a recent school council held where Principal McAdams specially invited all parents of the EES community or families of the EES community to join because after the MCAS scores came out, it became clear pretty quickly that some EES cohorts are not growing or improving at the same rate as what would be expected of, based on what the peers of their same skill level are doing, based on one input. And she wanted to really help people understand and explain that. I share that with you because if that's something that you are hearing about or want to learn more about, she's an excellent resource and I believe she's sharing her presentation on that. She's very busy evaluating the why at this point. We, on November 7th, we will have our student achievement data meeting discussion at school committee and we'll be looking at, understanding more of how that, how that's all happening and what remediation is taking place. And then on a final note, with regard to the same meeting, she did bring forth an idea that, that one, one way to help EES students progress better is to offer enrichment. She really put forth the idea that student learning doesn't stop at 3 o'clock and right now, we have a disparity between what EES students and what Manchester Memorial students are able to access in terms of after-school enrichment programming. Manchester has a robust Parks and Rec program that offers a slew of different offerings at Memorial School after school and we don't have an equivalent here in Essex. So she is moving forward using, using her teachers as resources to help organize this, trying to create on a much smaller scale for now, some after-school enrichment. The hope is that there will be community members who might be willing to volunteer their time based on an interest, any interest at all, whatever it happens to be, to work with a group of, a small group of students, maybe four to eight students for, you know, once a week for maybe a four-week stretch. So if you know of anyone who might be interested in helping out with that, help our, our EES students gain some equitable access to after-school enrichment, that would be wonderful. And that is it for my comments. Do you have any questions?
So, does anyone have questions? My only question, Teresa, is on the paraprofessional negotiation front, how many meetings has been, have they had at this point?
I think one.
One negotiation?
Yeah. One meeting.
What's that, Kate? We have one Thursday.
And they have one on Thursday. Kate, what time of day are the meetings?
3:30.
And do you see, do you see that there will be multiple? Do you think you'll wrap up this Thursday? How many generally do you have when you're negotiating a contract like this?
It really depends on the starting points. We don't have our starting points defined. That will come out on Thursday.
Okay.
See how far apart we are with the teachers that took us.
She can't hear Kate.
Oh, right. Sorry, Kate, can you come to the microphone so everyone can hear you? I apologize.
So when we did the teacher contract, that took right up until the spring, but we had a starting point for that, right? We're working off of an existing contract. This is a fresh contract, so our teaching assistants have not been on a contract and on Thursday, we will see sort of what they're bringing to the table and how far apart it is from our vision.
Excellent. You said these are open meetings, so the public is welcome to attend them?
These are not open meetings.
Oh, these aren't?
These are negotiations, contract negotiations.
Well, during the teacher negotiations, we were invited.
So that was a silent observer model. That's different from an open meeting.
Okay.
So silent observers are, are parties who have a direct interest in that, so our town partners were invited for those and members of the teachers' union, not the same as an open meeting where anybody can launder in.
I apologize. Not an open meeting. So do you have the silent observer model for these negotiations?
So that was on the table. It has not been ruled out. It has also not been confirmed. I will let Pam know that that is a question that you have, though.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Ruth, I have a question for Teresa.
Thanks, Kate.
Does the, on the Essex Elementary School, does the state consider only complete new builds or can there be a heavy renovation and all that? The reason I ask is we received a comment from a taxpayer about the value of the superstructure of the existing school and at least at the 10,000-foot level, it seemed to make some sense and it would be valuable to maybe look at that a little bit more in depth, but that's, and that's definitely possible, is what you're saying.
It is and not only is it possible, but it will be required to be explored. So if we are accepted into the next round of this to actually begin the process, that will be part of the process of the feasibility study.
It's an option you have to review.
Will be to determine what, what route we're going with this, yeah. And one thing to keep in mind with that is that Essex Elementary was built K through 8 and so we're a little bit outsized. We're not, for us, it's not that we're stuffing everyone in, in little areas. I mean, a lot of spaces have been retrofitted, but in terms of enrollment, the square footage would probably shrink, kind of like we experienced with the Eagles Nest Playground because based on the student enrollment that we have now and the MSBA model, the square footage would potentially shrink. So if we wanted to retain the same square footage or the same footprint of it, we would have to do a rebuild. So that'll be, that'll all be determined by, in a very long process with loads of community input and, and discussion about it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana, would you like to join us?
Oh, thank you. Dana Menon, Town Planner. I have continued my work assisting the Affordable Housing Trust, the Economic Development Committee, and the Planning Board, and each of those chairs are here tonight, so I won't repeat the work that all of those groups have been doing. In addition to that, I have continued to investigate potential cost savings through energy efficiency projects. So the project that's currently underway is being funded through a state GAP 3 grant program. through a state gap three grant program, and also through utility incentives. And it's some upgrades to equipment at the water treatment plant and a couple of sewer pumping stations. So, a high-efficiency boiler was about a month ago installed at the water treatment plant, and by the end of the year, two VFDs, variable frequency drives, will be installed at two different sewer pumping stations, as well as a new transformer at the water treatment plant. And that total project cost is about $129,600, and $117,500 will be covered through incentives and gap grant funding. So, and those will all realize savings through energy efficiency. In addition, I recently had conversations with Brendan and Ruth, letting them know that due to personal situation, I will have to be scaling back my hours, starting in mid-end of December, and will continue at a kind of as-needed basis for the next few months after that, and assist with finding a replacement for my position at some point in the future, whenever that happens. But I will remain available as my time and schedule allows to assist with strategic projects or grant applications as needed. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dana?
No.
Jody Harris. Lisa, I'm going to save you till last, because I think we have the most to cover with the Planning Board.
Yes, Lisa. Economic development continues, and the lighting project on the causeway, the plaques that we worked in collaboration with the Essex Shipbuilding Museum have been completed and are actually in the basement of the Town Hall. Shelley Brideberry was instrumental as the volunteer to shepherd that project through. It was done in just under $10,000 for 23 plaques to accompany the 23 historic lights that we are looking to install. We have the final warrant article to fund the first 23 lights. This has been a long-term capital plan since 2009 to actually install historic lighting, plaques, benches, improve pocket parks, provide banners, all of these things throughout the long-term planning process have come up, 2009, 2013, 2015, and recently, 2019, in our current strategic plan. So, we're honing in on the last piece of that. We recently went to CPC for funding for the final piece of the pavilion project for the roofing. They approved $75,000 to move forward to Town Meeting. And additionally, the bathroom project for the Grove is also an approved move-to-Town Meeting project for $275,000. Those will install complete bathrooms that would be utilized by the Grove rental, the people who use the Grove for the beach, the YMCA, the baseball fields. That would be a complete drop in as bathrooms with the tight tank. We continue our work on the guide to doing business and are stepping through that. It's a slow process, but we've had some new input by a newer member on the committee, which is helpful, as she's a new business owner in town. So, it's been very helpful for us. Lastly, we have been, actually not last, owner unknown work continues in looking at some parcels that have been off the tax rolls for some time and may be of some value to the town and projects going forward. Our last meeting, we focused mainly on a brainstorming session to look for new revenue opportunities in town. This is a no-holds-barred session. No idea was outside of the scope. We'll be developing a list and starting to shake some of those down and start vetting what we think are the most, the greatest opportunities for new revenue in town. So, that's it for the moment.
Great. Any questions? No?
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you, Jody. Erin.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, just a couple of quick Board of Health updates. We did our primary clinic, flu clinic, at the Senior Center. We also did a flu clinic at Tobacco Terrace, the one we usually do here during Clamfest was canceled. But if anyone wants a flu shot, they can call the office. Anytime I'm here, I can do that. We also have a limited amount of Moderna available. It was very expensive. We weren't able to buy enough doses to do, you know, big clinics like we had been doing. But we did first responders, homebound residents, town employees, and we have, you know, we have some left. I'm getting some more delivered tomorrow. So, just call the office or reach out to me. Board of Health permitting is fully online, so renewals for things like restaurants, septic installers, tobacco licenses, all available online. Thanks to Jeff. He developed, built this whole system. It's really awesome. The Board of Health adopted a private trash hauler regulation at our last meeting, so private haulers of solid waste and recycling will now need to be licensed by the Board of Health every year, the same as everyone else, starting January 1st. There's a draft regulation on our webpage. I think it's dated July. The version the Board voted on at our last meeting is that same version. I'm just waiting for them to sign it. We're interviewing tomorrow for a full-time public health nurse through our shared Public Health Excellence Grant. It's the second interview. We had a couple of good candidates. I'm excited about this, to sort of fill in the gaps that our very part-time public health nurse kind of leaves us with. This full-time nurse will be shared with Essex, Hamilton, Wenham, and Rockport. And finally, I did get a lot of updates from our shared social worker, Jessie Palm, who is covered, you know, under the same Public Health Excellence Grant, so I'm just going to read those off. Jessie says, "Community hours are going well." She has office hours at the Essex Senior Center every Monday from 9:30 to 11:00, and Essex Town Hall Wednesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Anybody can come in if they're having issues, if they need one-on-one counseling, if they just need to vent, if they need access to resources. Jessie's available. She's just kind of sitting there working, so anybody can pop in. She has started a caregiver support group, also located at the Senior Center, on the third Monday of the month at 10:30. She's currently focusing on spouse caregivers, but this may evolve as things develop. She's working with folks at the school district on getting the Regional Youth Prevention Network, which is a collaboration, a coalition based in Gloucester that Essex is part of. Manchester's also part of it. Getting the Regional Youth Prevention Network identified as a teen resource, as well as Unity in Gloucester. Unity's a drop-in center, really has some awesome programming. We are working with One Stop to get an informational session scheduled, highlighting the services that they offer, including STI testing, Narcan training, referral to services, and then their needle exchange. Jessie participated in a stakeholders' meeting at the Y last week and is working on expanding our after-school program. And finally, Be Healthy Beverly and the Regional Youth Prevention Network are participating in a community art project that Essex will be participating in to create a mandala. The topic is the emotions your community gives you. So, there'll be more information on that. It'll be open to anyone in town, all ages. That's it?
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm all set. Thank you. Kate, do you have a report from the Council on Aging? Anne?
Hi, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to give you a little update on where we're at, since we were here a few weeks back. The happy news that we have to report is the wonderful update on our planned program with UMass Boston's Gerontology Institute, and that we were able to achieve the grant for the entire sum of money, for the entire $35,000. So, we're very excited about that and look forward to beginning that planning process. That study will be beginning, the process, we're on their docket scheduling, starting in June of '24, and the entire project will take about a year to complete. We have four legs, as we described previously about our business model, and currently, the leg that involves our constituency services, which are referrals, is in full swing right now with open enrollment for Medicare. So, we will be very busy between now and the close of open enrollment on December 7th. So, that is taking a lot of our staff time at the present time. We have the second and third legs of our business, which model, which really involve programs and events, and we have a good schedule, which is a full chocolate block calendar, which everybody can access and see what's going on. There's something for everyone, and we're really excited about Holiday Boutique in conjunction with the Friends. So, please, everybody, come and do some shopping and support us, because it comes back. Last year, the Friends, we're very grateful to them. We were able to receive $15,000 from the Friends in support of different funds, different programs. The last piece is facilities, and as Brendan knows, we've got a number of ongoing maintenance-related issues, and not the least of which one is the boundary updates that is continuing on. So, there are things that are in progress. Nothing new or significant to report outside of the ordinary there. We will say that we are anticipating some staffing changes of significant impact in the near future, and we will be meeting to have, we will be applying to have a meeting, posting to have a meeting with the Board, most likely in the next week or so. There is a meeting scheduled with Kate and Diane Polly, with Brendan, to discuss next steps. The anticipation is that we may be losing our director, so we will be coming forth with more when we have more information to share about that. But beyond that, that is our short and sweet update. Any questions or anything that we can highlight for you?
I think it's important to just let the Board know that Kristin has committed to staying on with the town through the SHINE process, so that she doesn't leave us mid-cycle of open enrollment. So, just so that they have a clear picture that we're not going to have our seniors in limbo without someone that's experienced to help guide them through that process. So, she's committed to staying on, at least in some sort of a capacity, to help us get through that date.
Yeah, exactly. We didn't know if we could stay, that this kind of dis.
You opened the door, so I don't want to leave minds wandering. I want them to know that we're not leaving people hanging.
No, no, we're very committed. And since we're able to say something openly, we have not yet met as a Board to discuss or accept this potential turnover in staffing. But we are certainly extremely grateful and blessed to have been able to have worked alongside Kristin. She has done so much for us. It will be big shoes to fill if indeed this is a transition in time. But we are liking to express publicly our gratitude for where we're at right now, and look forward to a smooth transition if this is, and wish her the very best. This is a wonderful opportunity for her. Sad for us, but a wonderful opportunity for her.
Thank you, Anne. I echo that as well. I appreciate Kristin's dedication and commitment to the community, and I hope she does well with her next position.
You sure do. Thank you so much.
So, I'm gonna, I think I've got everyone in the room, with the exception of Lisa. Did I miss anybody? She's online. I'm going to go to online next. Nobody else. Okay, so, Jeff, if, actually, I'm going to hold Jeff, because I think you're going to be lengthy for us as well. But Maria, if you'd like to do your report out next, that would be great.
Hi, thank you. Hi, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I appreciate you allowing me to zoom in here. I just have a few quick updates for you. So, just general business. As of September 1st, the 2023-2024 parking stickers, resident parking stickers became available, and we've had a good turnout for those, but we still have a significant MO to disperse. So, those are available. And if, we've had quite a few parking tickets, and people are a little disgruntled by parking tickets, which I think everybody is when they get one, but to avoid those, the resident parking stickers are a good thing to have, just so everyone knows that everyone's in the right spot. In other general business, I'd say there's been about a dozen new and renewed business licenses in the past few months, which is great. And just a reminder to everyone, you can get a business certificate at the Town Clerk's Office. They're $25, and they're valid for four years. The big topic lately has been Town Meeting, which will be three weeks from tonight, on Monday, November 13th. The special Town Meeting will take place at the Essex Elementary School Gymnasium. The warrant will be posted shortly, and it will be available in my office, online, as well as at the post office, the elementary school, and the DPW. If you are new to town or you have been in town but haven't had a chance to register to vote, the law states that you have 10 days before a Town Meeting. The 10th day before Town Meeting is the last day to register to vote to participate in Town Meeting. So, my office will be open on Friday until 5:00 p.m. on November 3rd, in order to accommodate anyone who might want to come in and register. Of course, you're always welcome to register online or come into the office during regular business hours to do that as well. Another thing coming up is November 10th, I will also be in the office until 5:00 o'clock. That's the day in time that the state designated to be the deadline for all town political party nomination papers. We have had two parties take out papers for that, and we'll accept them. We'll do our part to certify them and whatnot, and get them back to the committee so that they can bring them to the state, so that they can be placed on the ballot for March. I'm trying to think what else. In addition, oh, a number of people were sworn in as election officers, or appointed as election officers in July. I have a few people who have reached out, and I have reached out to a number of people as well. If you're looking to volunteer for the Town Meeting, please just get in touch with my office. That would be fantastic. Speaking of voter registration, this has come up quite a bit. Whenever you, I don't know how many, I don't think this is widely known, but whenever you register to get a new license with the RMB, you're automatically re-registered to vote. And then, the state requires us to send you a notification saying, "Thank you for registering to vote," which is great, except it causes a lot of confusion, because there's a number of people who feel confused by that, because they, "Well, I've always voted. I've been voting for 20 years." So, I just want to give a general knowledge, a fact out there, that it's not changing your registration in any way. It's just updating your registration, so to speak. And I was at a conference in Springfield a few weeks ago, and the main topic, the only topic, was elections and voter registration. And this is something that, with the new voter registration information system that the state runs, we're getting a new program. It's been a long time in the works, and with this new program, that will no longer be the case. So, hopefully we'll save some confusion on that going forward. In addition to that, some good news for, I think, everybody, I know the town clerks were all happy to hear it, that there are going to be some changes with the next election cycle. We, our first big election will be the March 8 primary, for the presidential primary, and there will be, for the early voting ballots, there will no longer be those envelopes that don't stick. There will be self-adhesive envelopes, and there will be a big red arrow for signatures, and as well as white envelopes, just to make it more readable, easier to process in the voting machines and whatnot. It's, that was a big problem, but I think all the town clerks reported on having, and the elections officials, and I'm looking forward to having that fixed for everybody's involvement. In addition to that, tomorrow, at that same conference, we heard of, there was Dennis Mott. He's a cybersecurity specialist, and he offers the CISA, the Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency. They work with the Elections Division to come out and do a security review, free of charge for your office, and just to make sure that everything is going well, that your computer systems are all secure and up to date, the state computers. And that's something I'll be participating in tomorrow. We had discussed it at the Department Head Meeting for Risk Assessment, and Brendan gave the approval, which was great, and as did Ruthie, and I think it's free of charge, and I think it's a great thing, because it can, you know, if nothing else, it can clear any doubt as to our security and how safe we run elections at Essex Town Hall. So, I think that's great. And I think that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Marie. Any questions for Marie? No? All right. Thank you so much. Jeff Sullard, if you would like to unmute. Jeff Sullard, if you would like to unmute.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. So I think Brooke is out at another commitment, so I'll kind of cover finance as a whole, Treasurer's Office, and then the accounting stuff. You know, Treasurer's Office running really well, Brooke and Dottie, as always, doing a great job. We have a tax deadline next week, Wednesday is November 1st. Much like most quarters, we will probably receive somewhere in the range of $1,003, $1,004, probably by the end of this week, from the mortgage companies, which is always a nice inflow of cash for us as we head into year-end here. On the accounting side, we are pretty much wrapped up with FY '23. Our balance sheet has been submitted to the DOR, and they've certified that balance sheet and our free cash. The audit team has finished their fieldwork and answered most of their questions, and I'm being told that, you know, it's probably a few weeks, and we'll see an actual audit report, so hopefully before the end of November, you know, and I'll probably have a chance to look at it, you know, before I move on, which is great, you know, that way Chuck doesn't have to, you know, look at the prior year and sort of sign off on that. In terms of free cash, some of you have seen it already, we ended up having $2.4 million of free cash certified. We had been working with a more conservative number of about 2.2, just to be safe, but the hope was always it was going to come in closer to the 2.4 million number, which sounds great, but as most of you know, you know, the large part of that number, you know, a little over $1 million of that, is just funds that we've rolled over from year to year in anticipation of the ladder truck that Chief Reader was speaking about earlier. So, you know, we look at the potential that we're gonna, you know, dwindle these funds pretty significantly in the coming weeks at Fall Town Meeting. The Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow night, and that will be the biggest part of the discussion. We'll be going through the monetary summary and looking at how to fund the numerous, you know, projects that are on the table that have financial implications, and trying to find the most efficient way to fund these projects, whether it's, you know, the specialized stabilization funds, some other funds, like the Technology Fund, I think we'll use to cover the potential Wi-Fi and cameras at The Grove, where we're using CPA funding, I heard mentioned a little earlier tonight, for several projects. You know, we've got a stabilization fund for vehicles that we've been trying to stash some money into the last few years. It's gonna help us sort of cover some of the cost of the ladder truck, but despite having 2.4 million of free cash, it is going to be, you know, still a challenging town meeting to try to meet all of the capital and operating needs we have, you know, utilizing that number of free cash and, you know, several other sources. Beyond that, I just continue to work on implementing the new software that we're using, Brooke and I. We've gotten through the implementation of the Treasurer Collector, and that's pretty much done, and now we're just working through all the quirks of the accounting system and booking entries, and learning how to do certain reporting and things like that, and where I can, trying to, you know, write, you know, some procedures and things to help Chuck when he comes in, because I don't believe he's utilized VDR in the past, so this will be, you know, new to him as well. So that's, you know, a lot going on in the Accounting Department, but that's about it.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Do you have any questions for Jeff? No? All right. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anybody else online that's a department head that I cannot see? Okay. Lisa, last but not least, I'm saving you for last, because Lisa's gonna be talking, I'm sure, about the four articles for zoning that are gonna be on Fall Town Meeting, and there's a lot to cover.
Yep. Just in other Planning Board non-news, we haven't actually been that busy with a lot of regular kind of stuff, which has worked out well, because we've been busy with bylaw articles. But there haven't been, I guess, sort of building, maybe is slowing down a little, so a lot hasn't come before us. We haven't had any other A&amp;Rs. We've had a couple that are lurking in the wings, but they haven't materialized yet. So we are also still posting the advertisement for our Planning Board Clerk. With everything else going on, we're not actively pursuing that, but the job is still posted, and it will remain posted until it's filled, if there's anyone who wants a eight-to-10-hour a week job with a planning board. So outside of that, we've been working on the bylaw project with MAPC, and they've given us some guidance. What they're doing is ultimately writing material that would be a sort of final product, but as you know, the process that we need to go through, through town meeting, is to do this in sort of manageable bites. So we've been taking the material that they give us and sort of distilling it down, so that we sort of hit the highlights that we need to be able to move forward with making modifications to the bylaw that are gonna help us. So that said, we started out with looking at eight articles to drive, be a little bit more ambitious, but some of the comprehensive tables were getting cumbersome, so we eliminated those, and we've condensed things, so that we're just looking at general use. The first article, which is Article 4, is, the formal term is codifying the general use district, but I call it formalization, because codifying just is a word that people go like, huh? So been calling it formalizing the general use district. And just for background on that, Essex has not had zoning districts like every other community in the eastern half of the state. But in recent years, we did have to draw the Southern Canoma Point and the Central Canoma Point zoning districts to be able to divide that land and sell it as part of settling the whole Canoma Point issues out there. So that will, Southern Canoma Point and Central Canoma Point were our first two actual zoning districts in town. And then several years ago, the Planning Board also proposed, and Town Meeting passed the Downtown District, which allows mixed-use buildings by right, which enabled sort of, and that changed some of the dimensional standards to allow the more dense development that we know in the Downtown District. So those two, those three districts comprise about 2% of the land area in Essex, so there's another 98% of the land area that remains undistricted. So Article 4 seeks to draw a line around the rest of Essex and call it the General Use District. And in that article, we're not changing anything about the General Use District, we're just formalizing it as a district. In the restructured bylaw that was approved in May, we changed the structure of the bylaw such that there is a section of the bylaw that addresses the used districts, and in there, there's a section for Southern Canoma Point, Central Canoma Point, and Downtown District. So the General Use District would be the fourth district that gets added to that section. So the text of the bylaw article that addresses that uses the same format that we've used for the other zoning districts, and fills in material that is found in other places in the bylaw, brings it all sort of into this section that addresses the general use district. So because of that, there are 10 sections that talk about purpose establishment, use regulations, principal and accessory uses, and dimensional standards, non-conforming lots and structures, which is our typical structure. Then the existing bylaw has Section 4 as use regulations, and the use regulations that were contained in there were meant for Essex as a whole, when we didn't have the other three zoning districts. So we're taking stuff out of Section 4, because now it's included with each district in Section 3. So part of this article deletes some of the information in Section 4. Similarly, it will delete some of the information in Section 5, which addresses dimensional and density standards, because again, the dimensional standards that are outlined in Section 5 were meant for the entire town, and now that we would have four separate districts, three very small ones and one super huge one, that the information for each district would appear in that district section in the district section of the bylaw. So again, half of this article is just deleting stuff that is superfluous now by formalizing the general use district. So do you have any questions about that before I jump onto the next one? It's really semantics, there is no substantive change in that article. It's just reorganizing things into a more convenient format for the way we're restructuring the bylaw. It's a little-by-little process, because we had to have, in May, we got the restructuring done, and now we're starting to populate those sections that we established then.
Lisa, just one question. The way the general use district is coming about, do you plan to offer a map, or is it just explaining that anything that's not already in another district is in the general use district?
It'd be nice if we had a map, but I don't think it's really necessary, because it really literally is everything that is not.
Right, and nothing is referenced, there's no map referenced in the article itself, correct?
There is.
Just wanted to make sure that...
There's a section that allows for a map. So section, the last section, 633410, is a district map. And then the other three sections for Canoma Point, the two Canoma Point districts, and for Downtown District, that section does have a map.
Page six.
It's Pia, it's page six.
Okay, so the question I have is whether or not you want this warrant to go, if it talks about a district map, do you want that to be changed to put "Reserve for Future Use"? Because you don't have a map to show in the warrant.
We can put "For Reserve for Future Use."
I think I can make, when the board votes on it, I think I'll recommend that change.
Okay.
Is it apparent, do you, in your opinion, is it apparent, though, from the text of the article, that it covers anything that's not already covered in another district?
Section 3343 says establishment, and says at the time of establishment of this district, it includes all land within the boundaries of the town that are not in one of the other districts established in 331, 332, or 333.
Perfect, so I think if we just put that small change "for future use" next to the place where it talks about a map, then we can move on with this, and then a map can come in due time.
Works for me, because it literally is everything else. Article 5 is updates to the Site Plan Review Process, which is in Section 10, which is our administrative regulations. And the Site Plan Review Process is something that happens on most projects of any size or all commercial projects in Essex, if there are changes that are being made through the building permitting process. So right now, in Essex, because the general use district allows residential, commercial, and industrial uses by right, the change of use of a piece of property is something that is considered, that has a site plan review done when that happens. So what, the changes that we're proposing for the Site Plan Review Process are to separate the type of Site Plan Review Process that would be done for a project that continues its established use. So if you look on page 10, Section 61072 is projects requiring Site Plan Review, and the original text just outlined what type of projects would require that. We're building that out to, into two sections, so there are projects continuing the established use of any building, structure, or site, and then we're also having a separate section for projects changing the established use of any building, structure, or site. And they would go through the same Site Plan Review Process that we've always had, and the same requirements trigger the Site Plan Review Process. The only thing that we're adding for projects changing the established use of any building, structure, or site, is that in addition to all the other criteria and steps that are completed, there would also be a public hearing held and a butter notification as part of that process. So what that does is, it doesn't, it doesn't change the outcome necessarily of the Site Plan Review Process, but what it does is it at least allows the neighbors to learn about it and to be able to come and participate in a public hearing. So, you know, unlike a special permit process, it does not give the Planning Board any ability to deny that change of use, but it does give the opportunity for a more public process, rather than just coming through the building inspector to the Planning Board and then having it done like that, so, which is the normal Site Plan Review Process for a project that continues in established use. So now, for something that changes established use, it would just be a little bit more of a public process, so that people can understand and are aware of it. Outside of that, it does not give the Planning Board any more authority than the regular Site Plan Review Process. So that is the substantive change in the Site Plan Review Process. There's some other updates that we're trying to incorporate, a little bit more clarification on some of the criteria, which is really just adding things like lighting and signage, which are things we always talked about anyway, but now we're actually sort of putting it in the bylaw, and making special reference to the MS4 wastewater, stormwater, not wastewater, sorry, stormwater regulations, because that needs to be per the state part of the Site Plan Review Process. So that's pretty much it for Article 5. Does anyone have questions? On that? Nope. Article 6 is just updating some of the definitions from our Section 2 of the bylaw, and again, there's nothing really substantive in these changes. They're making things a little bit more current and/or clear, and we're adding some new definitions that we've encountered over the year, which seem to, over the years, which seem to be missing. So just things like adding attic and basement and certificate of occupancy, and then some clarifications and some of the other terms. There's some confusion around the way lot area and building areas are defined, so we tried to clear that up. We separated the definition for mixed use into mixed-use structures versus mixed-use properties, so that that's clear. That's really the highlights there, so. And then Article 4 is asking again to, I'm sorry, it's the fourth article, Article 7, is asking again to extend the moratorium on change of use from residential or open space to commercial or industrial property, and that moratorium's been in place for two years?
Two years?
Well, it was two years ago that it was ratified at, yeah, May 2021, Town Meeting was when it started. And the purpose of trying to, I'm sorry, is this working, or am I coming, okay? Just sometimes it sounds like it's working, and sometimes it doesn't sound like it's working. So the purpose of that is to give us another cycle of town meetings in May, to be able to make some real meaningful changes to zoning in Essex that would provide protections for areas of town that are primarily residential. And that's been sort of the focus of the bylaw project with MAPC, to do that. And through this process, we've explored a number of different ways that that might happen, but what it's boiling down to is the only way that you can actually limit what the uses are in any particular area of town, is to actually regulate it and turn it into a district that says, this is, these are the uses that are allowed or not. So the only way to make residential neighborhoods officially residential neighborhoods is to make them residential districts, and draw actual zoning districts around that. So the reason to extend the moratorium is so that we have the opportunity to do that work between now and May, and we're going to be undertaking a very ambitious scope of work with MAPC's assistance to reach out to the public, to understand residents' concerns, businesses' concerns, because that is an important part of our community as well, so understanding where businesses need to stay available, and what areas are appropriate for defining residential neighborhoods. And I think with the history of Essex being sort of a mixed-use or, yeah, mixed-use development all around town, we also want to try and explore some other, I call it innovative, but different residential districts that would perhaps allow certain types of businesses and not others, ones that are more along the lines of home occupations, which are allowed in Essex and will, I believe, continue to be allowed, and/or look at even doing something where... to be allowed, and/or look at even doing something where in certain areas, allowing businesses through a special permit process. So there's some other ways that we can still try to maintain some of the fabric and homogeneity that's been Essex all along, but still protecting residential neighborhoods through some better controls. So, that's where we're going to be heading in May. It will be interesting as we work through the public outreach process to see how that all unfolds. We look forward to your support.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Sure. I wish we had more to, well, this is enough. It's 16 pages, and 16 pages of a town meeting of bylaw changes is a little bit, but hopefully it's pretty straightforward with the four articles, because there aren't a whole lot of really substantive changes yet. I had, listening to the school report talking about Essex Elementary, I'm just going to open a little can of worms, but just to throw it out there and get it on everyone's radar, I'm curious how the negotiations with Gloucester are going for the sewer, because as I think everyone knows, but no one really talks about out loud, is that development in Essex has been severely restricted by the lack of sewerage here in town. And if that increases, I think we can expect to see perhaps more development. And I'm talking about that from the point of view of looking ahead to our efforts to do any kind of zoning and how we should think about that. Is that going to play a role in that? And also, if Essex does grow a little bit more because of this, that's something that we definitely need to consider with Essex Elementary School. So, just throwing that out there.
Thank you.
Do you want to give an update?
We had a preliminary meeting with the four Cape Town communities hosted by Gloucester. And at this point in time, it doesn't seem like Gloucester's very interested in that. It will open up problems for some of the areas in Gloucester that if they all of a sudden get wastewater access, they're concerned about development. And there just doesn't, there was no follow-up meeting. I don't see it gelling yet, but we remain at the table if it comes back up.
Yep, good to know. Okay, thank you.
And I did get an update last week that we are reaching the limits of our sewer capacity. So that's also another interesting point by way of development, just another little thing to consider. My question for you, Lisa, as chair of the planning board, I think it's important, I know the answer, but it's important to get out into the universe. I'd like you to answer whether or not the moratorium has heard any business development projects that you were aware of that, had we not had the moratorium, would have gone forward?
Nothing has been brought to my attention.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa?
The other thing that's important with a moratorium and that point that I want to make there is, I have heard it characterized as a moratorium on commercial construction, which it absolutely is not, because we know there've been quite a number of commercial construction projects over the past couple of years. And properties that, businesses that are established are allowed to do whatever improvements they need to do. Any property that's operating as a business can continue, or it can change hands to a different business. It's just that taking a residential property and making it a business is the only thing. And I haven't, if there's something out there, it hasn't been brought to my attention, so.
Mine either. I just, we've, we've heard those rumblings, you and I both, people saying that we're trying to stop development, and I think that that's, you know, false. And I want to clarify that before you leave the stage.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're on the same page.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any department head, either online or in the room, that I missed that would like to speak now? Okay. If anybody that's in the room with us wants to leave, I'm going to give everybody a couple of minutes, just because I know it gets loud. And then I'm going to take a three-minute recess, and we will resume. So we're back in session. If you have side conversations, if you can take them outside. Brennan, if you want to move over to the Town Administrator's Report.
The first item in my report has to do with a summary of the Economic Development Committee meeting. Chairman Harris already gave you that summary, you know, highlights. There's a whole list of different things that the committee's looking at for potential new revenue to the town. And you have a copy of what we captured at the meeting in your With respect to the Centennial Grove, $75,000 from Community Preservation will be considered on November 13th for the pavilion. And then $275,000 from Community Preservation for the restrooms, which we plan to couple up with a $75,000 earmark, because the total cost of the restroom project is about $350,000. I don't know if you have any specific questions on EDC?
No. The only question I had on EDC was the, you know, I know that Jody was saying that no suggestion or question was a problem. So, I see that the comment about tiny houses.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand, does that, does tiny houses also constitute trailers, like our big trailers?
A lot of tiny houses are based on trailers, yeah.
So it would, either or?
I would say so. It wasn't, it wasn't ruled out in the discussion. And again, it was pure brainstorming. Right now, you couldn't do that even if you wanted to because of the zoning. With respect to the Summer Camp and Youth and Adult Enrichment Services request for proposals, it's a two-part process. The first part is that the board needs to go through the technical proposal, which you all have in your packages, and determine whether the proposal that was provided meets the, first of all, the minimum criteria. We only received one proposal, by the way. A total of six different organizations did pull documents, but only one, the YMCA of the North Shore, actually put in a proposal. If you look at page evaluation criteria, page three, minimum evaluation criteria, which talked about being a nonprofit. It talked about being engaged in summer camp and Youth and Adult Enrichment programs. And it talked about making sure that the programs would turn key. Unless you have any questions, I don't see any issue with the YMCA having met the minimum evaluation criteria.
Yep, I didn't see any.
So then, if you go back to page one, there were certain ranges of things, and I'll read those to you. So these are the comparative evaluation criteria for any organization So highly advantageous in criteria number one, which is known as the experience of the offerer, would be the offerer has 20 or more years of experience successfully operating and managing a summer camp program, has experience, past experience running a successful program for the Town of Essex, and typically offers youth adult enrichment services beyond just the operation of a summer camp. If you look at their response, they meet all those criteria. So unless you see differently, that would rank out as highly advantageous for criteria number one. Criteria two, the offerer's plan of services. Highly advantageous would be, the offerer's plan includes all information requested, is thorough and exceptionally detailed, and maximizes the potential of the available facility, including both summer camp and youth adult enrichment services. And in order to look at that, they went into a much larger, you know, pages two, three. It's mostly shown on page two, the detail that they're providing. Plan of services also shows up again on page eight. And the question is, you know, is it exceptionally detailed? Well, I would say so, but it's up to the board to agree or disagree.
I agree.
I agree as well.
We had an opportunity to read through all of this, so.
And so that's evaluation criteria two, which would also come in at highly advantageous. Number three, experience with summer and other programs. Highly advantageous would be the offerer has successfully operated and managed five or more summer camp programs that included or offered all or most of the events aspects listed in this RFP, has past experience in running a successful summer program for the Town of Essex, and has successfully offered youth and adult enrichment programs to other organizations. Again, if you look at what they wrote, I see that as highly advantageous. If the board agrees, that would mean not only did this proposal meet the minimum criteria, it went on to be ranked, and the rank or the rating would be overall highly advantageous. Does the board agree with that?
Yes, yes. Highly agree.
Okay. So now that you've actually ranked the proposal, it's time to open the cost proposal section, which you look at only after you receive or you assign a overall rating. So before we open that, does the board want to vote on rating the technical proposal as highly advantageous?
I will entertain a motion to rate the proposal as highly advantageous.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alva?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'll pass a two-part cost proposal package. One is for the summer camp, and the other is for the youth and adult enrichment services. So with respect to the summer camp, it's important to call attention to the fact that there are certain limitations that were put into what could be charged. It says in, on this first page, which is actually page 17 of the RFP, it says, "The fee charged for the eight-week program in year one may not exceed $2,000, and the fee charged for the four-week program in year one may not exceed $1,000." The board may recall that we did a survey, a comprehensive survey of other camps, and these numbers were actually pretty much lower than that. So if you go to page 18, and you look at the year-one pricing, they came in actually below your targets, which were lower than other camps in the area. So that's actually very favorable pricing. Then it says, "The fee charged to Essex residents for the eight-week program must be at least 15% lower than the fee charged to non-residents, and the fee charged to Essex residents for the four-week must be at least 10% lower than non-residents." You have camp pricing for YMCA members, which is just an option that they were allowed to put in, but it doesn't have to meet those requirements. And then camp pricing for community I'm wondering if they put that reverse. Yeah, well, it says, no, it says eight-week resident up there.
The numbers look like they're reversed. The numbers on option two look too high. It looks like these should be flipped.
Unless that's extended community.
Yeah.
But they both say 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Well, okay, so that's, that's, yeah, but the regular camp is only from 9:00 AM to 1:00, 1:00 PM. So these are just additional options. It says, "In addition to the information above..."
But on the front, it says, the table below, proposal must insert, it says nine to four.
So that's for nine to four, not the extra hours?
Yep. Well, again, we didn't open this until now because we weren't allowed to, so let's just try to work our way through it.
You see what Alva's saying?
Yeah.
That there it says that, but then here we see this, so they don't line up.
But I, the, the table, okay, has to do with the, let's see. The proposal must add two program fees for each of the three years, and insert the sum in a row in the subtitular year. These subtitles must be added. So that table is the eight-week, nine to four. What they've gone and done is they've also shown two additional options that are going from seven to six.
Gotcha.
Which are not part of how you're rating the...
Right.
It, it says here, "These additional options may include an eight-week program and a four-week program for non-residents. The price limitations stated above for the fees inserted in the cost proposal table do not apply to the options listed below."
Okay.
So it seems to me that they came in actually below your target, and then they're allowed to add, as each year goes by, I believe it was up to 3%. Just going to do some quick math.
It looks accurate.
Yeah, I'll just do it, though. Yeah, they're, so they're escalating at 3%, which is what the max was allowed. So it does appear that they met the standard. And then if you look at the other document that I gave you, which is, didn't have any limitations, but the cost per, I think these are probably per time that somebody would attend, is very reasonable for all those different non-summer camp programs, both youth and adult. And some of the things are actually coming in at no price. So in other words, they'll organize something, but there's no cost. And then everything else seems to be very reasonably priced for each attendance. And they did check off, I think every single option is checked, except for a ninja course. Okay, but all, and, and, yeah, ninja course on both youth, family slash...
But they're not necessarily going to offer all of these?
They're, they're saying that if they're checking it off, they're going to try to offer all of these.
They're going to try.
This was the list of things that the board came up with.
Right.
In the RFP development phase. And so they pretty much checked everything.
Yeah, in, in the proposal itself, they didn't commit to them all. They said possibly. You're saying if they checked it, then this is, once they're going to offer?
It's, they're going to try to offer. That's, that's, that's it. So, it would seem to me that you have the makings of a proposal that meets the technical and the cost proposal criteria, and that you could move on to setting up and awarding a contract to the YMCA of the North Shore. So unless there's other discussion, does the board want to vote to authorize me? Go ahead.
I think I'm still confused on the additional options.
They had to give additional options, but those additional options are not constrained by the pricing.
This is different, different setup.
That's the nine to four in the table. And then we told them that they had to offer at least two other options, but the cost proposal makes it clear that they're not being rated on those options. They're being rated on what the Essex resident has to pay.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No, I think it's a very thorough proposal.
I agree. I will entertain a motion to award the contract for summer camp and the youth adult enrichment services to the YMCA of the North Shore.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just a side note on that, the town meeting did approve a special ability to go five years out, so that was done in, in advance. And the last item in my report is the school budget collaboration group meeting summary. Teresa just provided the board, or me and Ruth, with a draft of the collaboration group meeting summary. I've provided it to the other two board members- I've provided it to the other two board members, recognizing it as a draft, because everyone that was in the session needs to have the chance to review it and comment on it. You know, as Teresa pointed out, most of this session was a discussion about the third-party evaluation, whether you call that a review, a study, an audit of the regional school district operational arrangement. It's not, we're not talking purely about a financial audit here, we're talking about looking at the operation of the school as a whole, both instructional and non-instructional, and having an expert determine whether there are other things that perhaps haven't been looked at that might lead to a cost savings. At the meeting, the Essex representatives indicated that it was the town's preference that it would just be Manchester and Essex paying for the review, and that the hope was that the district would cooperate with that. The town of Manchester has a different take, and they'd like to see the district also pay for a portion of the, of the review. At this point in time, so we don't, we don't have agreement on that, I know that the school committee on November seventh is going to consider the matter further, they're going to take some ideas that have been developed by Essex Finance Committee Chairman Ben Butrick, because he has looked at a few of these companies that do these types of assessments, and he has some cost ranges and some potential scope of services information for the committee to consider. With respect to the turf fields, there was a discussion about Essex continuing on with its stated intent, which would be to come up with a cash payment for its portion of the turf field work. That will be going to the town meeting on November thirteenth. We are very hopeful that the district will have a final accounting, even if the bills have not been fully paid, all invoices will be in the hopper so that the town can understand what the total project cost was. And of course, with respect to Brook Street Field, half of that field will be paid for by Manchester, and then the other half will be paid for roughly two-thirds by Manchester and one-third by Essex, whereas the high school field, two-thirds of the whole project by Manchester and one-third roughly of the whole project by Essex. I did have a follow-up conversation with Greg Fetterspiel today, because he wasn't in the room when we were going into exactly how Manchester was going to fund the work. And right now, we understand that Manchester has $800,000 in cash, but they owe about 1.2 million. And Greg said that they would be considering borrowing for the remainder of the money. But of course, we're gonna leave that to Manchester. You were at the meeting, and a lot of these folks were at the meeting, I don't know if there's any communication you want to have now, or is there anything that you, else you wanted to discuss?
I don't think so. I think I was under the impression that we're following the agreed upon protocol where we get approval from all the members and then the chairs distributed, so I'm gonna hold off on.
Yeah, and I, I agree, it's just that we had it on the agenda, and I didn't want to let the meeting pass without the members seeing the more detailed summary that you took the time to prepare. It's, I don't see it as a break in protocol. I told them it's a draft document. I think it just provides them with more detail.
Well, I understand that absolutely doesn't, I know, but I did discuss it already and we're trying to process it, we agreed on together.
Sure.
So let's go over to the fall town meeting warrant.
Yep.
Do we have any further conversation about that before I vote to, before I take all the motions that are required to actually go into the fall town meeting?
Just on page six, as we discussed earlier.
Yes. Let me grab my copyright marks out.
Where it says, section six dash three, point three, point four, point ten, district map.
Reserved for future use.
You'll see, yeah, you see the one above it says parenz, reserved for future use. The recommendation is to put the same parenz, parenthetical, right after just the words district map. That would be the only change. And so the board could vote to approve the warrant, the various votes as, as amended.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to hold the fall town meeting on Monday, November thirteenth, 2023, at 7:30 PM at Essex Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to open the warrant for the November thirteenth, 2023 fall town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to add articles, to add articles for November thirteenth, 2023 fall town meeting, per the draft warrant presented at this meeting, revised with page six of twenty-three, six dash three dot three dot four dot ten, to input, to remove district map and inserts reserved for future use.
So moved.
What did you just say? Not to remove, to just add, right?
We're gonna remove where it says district map, and we're gonna in its place.
So district map stays there, because they want a placeholder to say this will be where district map goes in the future.
Oh, okay, so we're leaving.
Just like the one above it, see how they have a word, a couple of words, and then they say it's reserved. So they are kind of setting off the, what the category will be about.
Gotcha.
Without actually having a map.
So, okay. So inserting reserved for future use.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to close the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the last item on our agenda.
So Pam, how many do you have here? You have all three. And you're all set?
Yes. I didn't sign any. I have to sign everything. Sorry.
Yep.
Did we do this? Senior said it?
They postponed.
Oh, that was postponed?
Yeah, because they, we don't have an update from them. So at the tab, that's the warrant to sign. And I will swap out that page in the morning.
The final item on our agenda this evening is to consider a proposal from a high school student for a community garden in curbside recycling. So we all received an email that was sent to Pam from Isabella Hilton. Does everybody have that?
Yep.
So Isabella's making a recommendation that we convert the plot of land that was formerly the old police and fire station at 24 Martin Street into a community garden. And she also mentions recycling.
Yeah. Curbside.
Curbside recycling, I was looking for what she, what she mentioned. She just mentions if someone, she mentions curbside recycling would be an amazing addition to our town if someone doesn't have recycling or doesn't know where to put it. They could bring it to their neighborhood recycling bin, and then it gets sent to be recycled. In terms of a community garden in curbside recycling, I'd be more than happy to talk to the fellow residents and collect their opinions and ideas. So as we know, we have a transfer station, we don't have a place to necessarily bring recycling, there's a cost associated with doing our recycling, so we do offer that service. I think most people that live in the town of Essex know that we have the option for recycling, but we don't have a service that does curbside. We looked into that when we were making decisions about the transfer station, and it was not affordable at that time. Sticking with our transfer station was about $330,000 a year, and going to curbside was over $800,000 a year. So we opted to stay with the, the less expensive option. As far as turning 24 Martin Street into a community garden, I don't know if the board has comments or feelings on that. I know that one of my concerns is that the EDC's been working on, you know, we have a placemaking plan that was done with a lot of work that went into what that space may look like in the more near term. And then long-term, there was a discussion for the possibility of a community center. So I don't know what our feelings are on community gardens in the center of town.
It was also, I thought there was some concern about the soil and the quality of the soil beneath, and, you know, a garden is more superficial, but I don't know what's below, you know, and how deep and all that, so that is certainly a concern as well.
And I don't think that it's a bad idea, but finding the right plot of land, to me, I don't know that that location is the right place. Having seen what the community gardens look like in other areas, other towns, I just don't know that it's, one, big enough, two, it's right there, visible for everybody to see, and some of the community gardens I've seen, that people have their own ideas of what they want for a community garden.
Yeah, each plot might have a different type of fence, a different grouping of, of different things that they hang on the site or whatever.
Legs and all kinds of things. So I'm not sure for me that that's a place that I'd want it, but I think it's.
There is parking, there is parking on the other.
Right, because it's a focal point of our downtown. So it's a big green space that would then become flavorful.
Right.
Although we could require standards potentially.
We have to enforce it.
Well, it may be something where, one of the things we had talked about when we acquired 30 Apple Street was the possibility of doing community gardens over there, where it's a little bit more of a hidden jewel, it's out of the downtown area, but because we were, by the time we voted to buy it and then needed to deal with it, we just allowed it to be haid. But while we have time between now and, you know, the future, that might be a spot where we took a little section of it and maybe said one acre of it would be a community garden or something. So I, I think I agree, it sounds like we agree that 24 Martin Street isn't the most appropriate spot for that.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly some options and priorities prior to a community garden for that site, as well as the, the soil condition quality as well, so.
Okay.
Before we work through that first.
Perfect. So could we just let her know that we received the proposal and thank her, and that we're gonna take no action at this time?
I can do it.
You'll do it? Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment online this evening? If there's any public comment, if you'd like to unmute yourself and let us know your name and your address? Okay. Hearing none is the public comment in the room. Sarah, if you want to come to the podium and speak about six inches away from the microphone, name and address.
This is good. Sarah Wolf, For Saganese Creek Road. Thanks, everybody, for being here so late and for your service to our town and for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to say that while I know that you, our elected town leaders, continue to tell us that you place a high value on education and want to maintain a strong school and support education, that it's not always clear to the constituents. So I have some suggestions for actions that you could take to show your support for the school district. The first is that you could approach conversations with the school district and our partner town with an assumption of professional competence and good faith. Stop accusing the school district of lacking transparency. As Lindsay Banks pointed out in a recent letter to the editor of The Cricket, "When the claim of a lack of transparency is made, it implies that these public servants are not doing their job and maybe even hiding something from the public. When the claim is unfounded, the damage of distress has been done by simply making the accusation. Haphazardly launching this accusation is misleading, irresponsible, and lazy. Instead, I ask that you trust in the competence of our well-experienced and professional and very capable school administrators and in the best intentions of our elected school committee members." Second, arrive to community, community meetings such as the all-boards meeting, prepared and ready to participate in the conversation. That includes sharing your own thoughts and opinions and listening to those of others. Do not rely on appointed committees to speak for you. As a resident of Essex, I fully expect my elected officials to speak for themselves. Three, as we finally are getting the ball rolling for a new Essex elementary school, please engage fully in the MSBA process. I was disappointed to hear that when the MSBA visited EES recently, the town of Essex did not have any representation other than school committee. Over the last five years, this board has not demonstrated support for the schools. We have endured prolonged budget discussions year after year, which has created instability in our district and in our towns. This distracts our educational professionals from doing their jobs and creates a climate of insecurity for our students. We can do better. Please support our communities by supporting our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anybody else with public comment?
Hi, Annie Cameron Pickering Street. I just wanted to review, you know, what we've seen in the past few weeks from the all-boards meeting, and it looks like the town of Manchester is not interested in doing anything with the regional agreement, and they're willing to go to a super-town meeting. So I'm asking you, imploring you to start collaborating now. We know what the structure has been in the past few years of how we funded the schools, and I guess I just want to ask you to kind of put aside the chaos and drama, it doesn't help. We know what the structure can be, and so I, I really would like to see some solutions starting now and not waiting until January, February, when it becomes a storm. And so I'm asking Alva, Peter, Ruth, to please lead on this.
You know, and I'm just gonna, Annie, I'm hearing so far that stop the drama. I'm not hearing drama from this committee. I'm not hearing, you know, I'm just a little bit frustrated that I'm hearing these things, but I'm not hearing it from the committee, that we are, we're not putting down the school. We're here for all residents, not just for a few residents. And so to be, to stop the drama, there is no drama.
There was a lot of drama in the spring.
There may have been drama in the spring, but to come here now and say, stop the drama, is, oh my God, what?
Well, that town board meeting was, we didn't look good. That all-boards meeting, I was embarrassed. So I think let's be cognizant of how we're going about this, let's be strategic, and let's solve problems instead of the same old stuff that we had last year. And I'm gonna say the same thing at FinCom, okay?
Does the board have anything further?
Nope.
Nope.
At 8:54, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alva, will you just?